Yeah, we're streaming.
Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Who's that?
I think it's Mark. I think he's trying to call you.
I think he's calling on his phone. Was doing the Zoom call. I think he's trying to use his phone. That's an option. We could have the video and do his phone.
You have entered the meeting as a panelist.
This is an electronic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
And I can hear you. I'm using my phone.
Oh, good idea.
So.
Good idea. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
No idea why this isn't working.
Well, whatever. We won't worry about that now. Like I said, just waiting for Taylor. Another minute.
Go look at the packet real quick.
Sure. We have, Allison, we have Mark on his phone, so he can talk to us.
I, I heard that. Thank you. Hi, Mark.
I have no idea what's happening. This is strange.
Can you play like, can you hear music from your?
Nope. Nope.
Would you like me to sing?
Oh, that would be true. Can I hear that?
You won't do it very long.
Careful, he'll sign you.
And you're sure you don't just have the volume all the way down?
Positive.
Okay, we're at 6:30. You've got another one more minute to wait for Taylor. If not, we'll start off with some other running stuff.
I love these kinds of problems for some reason. It's really hard for me not to ask more questions.
I know. They call you Ms. Fixit.
Taylor's here.
Oh, cool. Cool, cool, cool. Hello, Taylor.
Hi, guys.
Okay, the gang's all over here, so let's, we're recording, correct, Allison?
Yeah, actually, we're on YouTube, but we might as well start a, I'll start a club recording also.
Okay. All right. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Camden Select Board meeting for April 20th, 2021. Before we begin a meeting, again, a reminder, we're broadcasting, working over Zoom webinar format. The, the link for this meeting can be found on our agenda, which is in our town website. We're under Select Board, and just look for the Agenda packet. If you want to join electronically as an attendee, if you don't have the capability, you do have options and phone numbers on there to be able to dial in to the meeting. The only big difference is video, plus if you're dialing in and you want to raise your hand, believe the, if you press star nine, it will raise your hand and let you know that, let us know that you'd like to talk to the select board on the matter at hand. Please, everybody, use the raising your hand if you want to speak to the select board. We will try to get to everybody and allow you to be brought in from attendee to a participant. And, and please identify yourself and respectfully try to stay within three minutes, as much as you can. Thank you. With that, we'll go and start with our Agenda item one, which is Public Input on Non-Agenda Items. I don't believe we have any Janice. Is that correct? I really don't, so.
I'm not seeing anybody's hands in the, I mean, we don't always know ahead of time if we have.
No, we don't.
Public input, but I don't. There's no non-agenda.
I don't see anybody's hand raised right now.
Thank you. Item two is the approval of the Select Board Meeting Minutes from a meeting of April 6, 2021. Board members, do you have any comments on the meeting minutes? Mark? I'm sorry, Allison. I should have Mark's hand first.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, go, no. Go for it.
I was just gonna say, under, it's, it's just a name spelling thing for me. I was, at one point, Mr. Raider instead of Mr. Ratner. And it was under the, things up at the top somewhere.
Okay. Anything else, Mark?
Nope, that was it.
Allison.
Um, oh, actually, yeah, it's, do you see the Raider? It's, that's an, I hadn't noticed that, but it's on item three. Mark Raider recused himself after discussing a potential conflict of interest. And I was thinking it might be better to say that he recused himself because he's a member of the organization. Just if I were Mark, it would, it just looks better than like, oh, potentially, he has a financial interest against them, or it would just be better, I think, to say what that was.
Yeah, I'm on the board, I'm on the board of the directors for the organization.
Just clarify, it's fine. Any other?
And that, yep. Yep, so then it says, roll call five eyes, motion passed four, zero, one.
Correct.
So it can't, it shouldn't, the five eyes part should go away.
Correct.
And then, let's see. On item four, where it says, Lookner motion to approve a new Vittler's license for Wolf Beach at 50 Elm Street, and 22nd at McKellar, discussed parking spaces required by ordinance, I would rather it say, there was a discussion about the issues for businesses that result from parking requirements or something like that. Just the whole point of it was that there's a little bit of an issue, not that I wanted to make sure our parking ordinance was being perfectly followed. And I think that's, yeah, that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve with those changes from Mark and from Allison?
So moved.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with those, those improvements added in.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call, Taylor.
Aye.
And, Jess, Janice, Jenna, thank you, Jay's here.
I left in the middle of the meeting, so I am not sure that I should sit this out, perhaps?
I think, I think you're okay.
I, I watched the meeting, so I give it an eye.
Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
That is five eyes. Thank you very much. The third item on our agenda is a consent agenda, which has two items on it. The first item is the approval of Vittler lodging licenses for Abigail's Inn, the Belmont Inn, Camden House of Pizza, and Oliver's Bistro. The second one is a slightly modified from our agenda. It's the approval of a Village Green application for Knox County Homeless Coalition, Coalition. Do I hear any objections from the board?
Yes.
Do you want me to take it, what, do you want me to take one off the consent agenda?
Take out, take out B. I'd like to discuss Village Green application.
All right, so we'll keep this consent agenda. The first item, which is the approval of the Victor license that I mentioned. Any objections? That, that item is hereby adopted. We'll discuss the approval of a Village Green application for Knox County Homeless Coalition. Mark, you want to talk to that?
Yes, I, it's been brought to my attention, I mean, all of our attention, that there are, the Village Green was given to the town with certain legal restrictions. And we haven't really, it's been questioned whether some of the, some of the applications that we've authorized have been legally permitted under those things. And so I'd just like to revisit. I'd like to understand what the restrictions are legally, so we know exactly what we can and what we can't approve. And it's been a while since we've done that.
Allison? Allison?
Yeah, so this is the same thing that has come up when we put the picnic tables out there. The, I've spent a good amount of time reading all of the deeds. This particular deed, the only actual restriction that comes with it is no commercial activity. And so where there's been an issue over the years is different select boards and committees and the interpretation of commercial activity. And so, you know, in, in the past, there's, you know, it's, it's possible to interpret that in, in different ways, sort of the, the one end of the extreme would be to interpret any kind of fundraising activity as commercial activity. That, when we had this discussion before with the homeless coalition, we basically said that we didn't subscribe to that interpretation.
That's correct. Taylor, you ready?
Okay.
Taylor, you ready to hand up?
Yeah, just, my two cents on it is that my feeling is that the intent of that deed restriction, and I think the common sense behind it is that we don't, that the Village Green is intended to be a community resource, not overrun with for-profit commercial activities. I think that for me, that that restriction is intended to bar for-profit commercial activities from being on a Village Green. And that if there are nonprofits or not-for-profit community organizations that may want to use the Village Green for fundraising, to me, that has a vested interest in it for the community and the community in mind, and that there's a pretty clear delineation between that and for-profit activity. And that's kind of the way that I look at it.
Yep.
One has clear community interest in mind, the other, a for-profit commercial business doesn't have any business being on the Village Green.
Correct. Any other comments? Jenna, do you want to say anything or not? I didn't want to go back to Allison.
I was just going to remind everyone that we did sort of set a precedent by working with the Knox County Homeless Coalition for their overnight.
Two years ago.
Maybe it's like, yeah, twice, or two years ago, rather, but.
Right.
Thank you, Allison.
I do think that Mark is correct, though, in that we have dealt with this and we've talked about it as a group, but it has been a, a long time since the Village Green use guidelines were updated. This is not part of our ordinance in any way, but it was, you know, a guidelines document that was created by a past select board, and it would be, it does prohibit things like amplified music. Again, none of these things were ever said by the donor. We know that the, the Village Green was donated as a, a, you know, to be a quiet green space, a quiet place in the middle of, of town at a time when there was a threat of it being truly developed for like, you know, gas station type purposes. So Mrs. Bach, Mary Louise Curtis Bach was an incredibly charitable person, and so the, you know, the idea of prohibiting a homeless coalition awareness fundraising event is kind of, we've, so anyway, I think we should, it would be good to get it on the agenda sometime, you know, develop a, a new
Yeah.
document.
I think we have a few policies to that effect, Allison, that we should probably review in either a workshop and/or a select board meeting, but I agree. And I can think of two offhand. This is one. But we, again, we discussed, we did discuss this two years ago, when the same topic came up about the Knox County Homeless Coalition. We approved it two years in a row, but it doesn't mean we can't review going forward. We, we had this discussion numerous times. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to accept or reject the approved, those being application.
We do also have, just to point out, Becca Gildred did comment, she's here from the homeless coalition, and she can speak to any, you know, anything. So that's just a comment that we received.
She can't speak to the, the policy we have. That's what we're discussing right now, but we can bring her on in a second, we should anyway. But can I have a motion to accept this? Taylor?
I move that we approve the Village Green application by Bay Chamber Concert and Knox County Homeless Coalition.
Second.
Motion made, discussion, roll call. Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Hi, and I'd just like to add that I'm comfortable that we've had a conversation about it, and that we're gonna spend some time in the future looking at it closer.
Not a problem, Marco. Allison, please.
Aye.
Aye, five zero. But while we have Ms. Becca here, Becca, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I, I just wanted to alleviate some of those fears in that this fundraising event, we have been very careful. We do not take any fundraising money on the green. All of it's done online prior to the event with the fundraising closing before the event, so that people are not raising money while they are sleeping on the green. And we've been very careful to abide by those, those regulations of the green to be able to be a good community partner. And we really appreciate your ability to give us this opportunity to raise awareness for an issue in our community in the fall. And we're excited that hopefully, you know, everything will work out, public health-wise. So we really appreciate your partnership.
We keep our fingers crossed, but confidence, right?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Yes, thank you so much.
Take care now.
Thank you.
Yep, now we move on to item four. Now, two weeks ago, we just set this date for a public hearing to discuss the Midcoast Community Internet Coalition Interlocal Agreement proposed for the June town meeting. Allison, could you, well, let me give you.
I'm looking for her right now.
There somewhere, I thought, but anyway.
Yep, here she is.
In terms of the, the hearing, as I've said before, please understand that the purpose of this hearing is to get public input on the matter at hand, in this case, the interlocal agreement from the public, and I will encourage anybody who wants to raise their hands, we can identify you, bring you up as a panelist, to discuss any comments you may have for the boards, to the board you hear. When the public is finished, I will close the public hearing. There'll be no more discussion from the public unless the select board member has a question of any, any of the public. But with that, and then we will, the select board will deliberate on the matter. But tonight, before, well, in a sense of public input, we have one of the, the caller, the keynote speaker of this topic in the, in the Midcoast range, Deborah Hall. Deborah, as you may all know, is the chair of the Rockport Select Board. But about, it was about nine months ago, Deborah, I think, when we established the task force, the Camden-Rockport Task Force, which Deborah's a member, Mark, Jeremy, members from Rockport, et cetera. And I gotta tell you, they've done, which Deborah Hall is the chair. They've done a phenomenal amount of work in a very short time. It's just unbelievable what they've done. I meant, I forgot to mention Matt Siegel also, from the Camden Planning Board. Deborah, maybe this good start would be, just to give a capsule, if you could, of, you know, the, the amount of activity that this task force has done, bringing us to this point, this, this milestone, as it were, and addressing this interlocal agreement, free format, but I think people need, really need to understand how much homework's been done here.
Sure, and thank you for inviting me to yet another select board meeting. But I'm, I'm happy to be here, you guys. The, yeah. In response to, in response to your question, Bob, the, you know, the, I, I think that our Camden and Rockport Task Force has been at this, maybe even a couple of years. It has been a couple of years, I think, because, you know, we, we issued articles, we wrote articles that were published for the public, and, and we published those articles even before the, you know, COVID was upon us. So I think that, you know, Camden and Rockport have put a tremendous amount of work into this in terms of, you know, articles and educating people. But we also, during that time, even before then, we were having dozens of meetings with, with potential internet service providers, investors, a whole host of folks that, Bob, you attended some of those too, before we were even an official task force together. So since, since that time, since, let's just say, since the, you know, the pandemic began, we have done a tremendous amount of work, true. We came up with guiding principles, we invited, we reached out to other towns, and frankly, we were very successful in that regard, because we have had a lot of towns come to ask us and ask us to join the coalition. We have about a dozen towns now who want, who are part of the coalition or want to be part of the regional utility, more than we can accommodate, frankly. But, you know, what we're also trying to do is to educate or collaborate with those towns to, to help them in their endeavors, even if we cannot be the solution for them. So we've done guiding principles. We have drafted the interlocal agreement, and I think, you know, we're ready to get this interlocal agreement hopefully put into place, because it's very, very important for us, you know, with all the funding that's out there right now, to be able to apply and to receive funding into this legal structure. That's key for us to, to get that head start.
And to that, and the purpose of this interlocal agreement, you mentioned the funds there, clearly, you could talk to Bethany, but millions, if not tens or hundreds of millions of dollars from federal, state, all across the board, that would assist the town, towns, in accomplishing this rather expensive endeavor to, to provide broadband to all residents of our towns, correct?
That's correct. It's, it's definitely expensive. It's a multi, a multimillion dollar effort, depending on, you know, which towns, it all depends on which, which towns and how many towns we start with. But, you know, you're talking about potentially $20 million. And it's, it's definitely an expensive effort that we're going to have to get low-cost, low-interest municipal loans for, issue revenue bonds for, all of that, but we also need to take advantage of the federal funding to the extent that we can, that is coming our way to towns and counties, because, you know, just like a down payment on a house, we need to have skin in the game. We need to have a down payment in order to obtain those loans and the revenue bonds and so forth. So anyway, it's, that part of it's really, really important, and those monies are coming soon, and we need to have a legal structure in place. So the interlocal agreement calls for Rockport and Char, Rockport and Camden to be the charter municipalities, which makes sense, because we're the ones that have been at this together for such a long time. And then together, after that, we would, as a board, make a decision as to what towns and when we can, we can let those towns be a part of the effort.
Maybe, I'm sorry, just one last question, globally looking, try to look at the global picture. Presuming that this interlocal agreement would be approved by the voters, Camden and Rockport in June, then to accomplish this funding, what's the vision, you've talked to him many times, just briefly, the vision about the broadband and how it can work?
Yeah, so, so the, you know, the guiding principles that, that your board has approved and that our board has approved, and frankly, about six or seven other surrounding towns, their select boards have also approved, is to create an open access network through a regional utility, which is what the interlocal agreement does, to create an open access network in which we would have more than one service provider provide broadband services. So it would be open access. And then the other aspect of that is, is that it's universal access, so that everybody has the opportunity to have high-speed broadband access. You know, gone are the days when we have profit-making entities that, that just choose, they cherry pick where the dense places are in our towns, and then everybody else is left without broadband. So the universal access means it's available to everyone. It's hard to do that when, you know, when you're, you've got tax dollars at play, right? Because then you may have some people saying, well, why should my taxpayers, you know, my tax dollars go to somebody who lives down a dirt road, you know, mile down a dirt road? You don't have those issues here, because we are not using taxpayer dollars. We're not using the local, we're not raising taxes for any town. In fact, the interlocal agreement doesn't even have the authority to assess the towns in that regard.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I just wanted a brief intro for the listeners who may not be as well knowledgeable, how much effort's been gone, gone under the bridge. Mark, did you hand up?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify and amplify a couple of things that Deb has worked on. One, as I've been a, a member of the, going to these meetings for a couple of years now, I've been mostly asking questions, I've been a cheerleader, Deb has done line cheer of the work for all of these towns and all this work. It's been amazing. But the things that are really important here, I think, that people need to understand, is there's a bunch of money available because of COVID for establishing broadband. When we say broadband, we mean like high fiber cable. A lot of people have a high fiber network. People have cable access right now, which is usually copper wiring, which is low speed. This is much faster broadband, both in and out, than is provided by your spectrums and your LCI's and companies like that, that are using regular cable services. It also is, right now, it's important to get those funds into a public utility, which this would be, which is not using town taxes, but is getting those funds to provide an open access network, so that companies can come in and compete, and hopefully at, at lower dollars to provide the internet. One of the things that's happening in competition right now is some of the towns have been approached by some of the private companies to apply for those monies and turn it over to the private company, so they can build the network, but then the private company will own it, and then they will be able to establish whatever prices they want. This is completely different. This will be owned by a public utility of all of our towns, and we will be able to invite many companies to come in and provide us internet at a less expensive price. This is the way to get the, the best internet at the cheapest prices, and that's really important.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions for Deborah while we have her attention here? Allison, ready?
So, just so nobody is confused with the, the idea that no taxpayer money is going to be used. I think we have, you know, we've had recent select board conversations about putting money into a study. And so can, can you just kind of help me understand how, when you say no taxpayer money would be used, it might be that we need taxpayer money or may choose to use some taxpayer money to understand, you know, to get it set up better, but then the, the utility itself wouldn't depend on that in the future?
Right. Well, I think our two towns, Camden and Rockport, have, last year and then this year, proposed in our budgets a certain amount of money that we, last year, we each put in 15,000. This year, we have proposed in our budgets 20,000 apiece. So together, our two towns have $70,000 that we put aside for purposes of, you know, feasibility study, or whatever we needed to get this, you know, just, just minimal amounts to get this thing going. So those are like past amounts, that past amounts or present amounts that we're putting in. But the idea is that we are not designing or building or funding the operation of this regional utility based on taxpayer, taxpayer funds that are raised locally. Now, you can look at any of those federal grant monies, et cetera, that are going to be coming to the county or the towns, as, I mean, those are federal tax funds, right? But they're coming to us unexpectedly from the federal government. What we're not doing is What we're not doing is, is assessing going forward, assessing our towns, raising our mill rates and paying for this through local taxes. There's no way we could. We just couldn't afford to. None of our towns could afford to.
And so it will all depend on being able, on the utility that is ultimately set up, being able to offer prices that are competitive enough that people that have spectrum, for instance, right now would say, wow, this is just a better deal to get it through this, you know, the municipal utility. It wouldn't, it's not obligating anybody to anything. It wouldn't.
No, no, not at all. But, you know, we often say, um, cheaper, faster, better. Fiber is for all kinds of reasons that, you know, that Mark touched on. I mean, it is the best, um, it is certainly the best technology that is out there and will be for years to come. And, um, for example, we all pay, I mean, I think a lot of us pay a hundred dollars. Some people pay close to $200 for, for TV and internet. There are two service providers for fiber out there right now that charge, um, for, I don't want to get too technical here, but 125 over 125, which is fast, um, for $55 a month. So it's really going to lower bills for people who are paying, for example, through spectrum or others.
Great, Mark.
Uh, one other thing I'd like to add is, is our goal is to establish fiber to every household. It's not to cherry pick, um, you know, where most houses are and make it. Our goal is to provide it for every household. So if you're out in the country and you have a situation where your child needs to, uh, communicate with your school, you will be able to do that on a, on a high fiber network, um, and with full speed and full ability.
That's right. That's the universal aspect of it. And it was in the prin, guiding principles that you approved that are guiding principles of the coalition. Because right now, you know, um, uh, for profit entities, they have to return a profit to shareholders. This is a not-for-profit entity. And any profit that we do make, which hopefully we will make some profit, we will be in the black after a number of years. That profit then gets returned into infrastructure. So we are taking what would normally go to shareholders and we're reinvesting those funds into the infrastructure of our towns, of our broadband infrastructure that we all own and take advantage of.
Well, Deborah, it's very important. Allison, then I want Taylor and Jenna, if you have anything. Go ahead, Allison.
Oh, no, if they have something, then definitely.
I didn't, Taylor, Jenna, do you have anything to comment? No, that's cool. Allison.
You know, I think a lot of the time people have this conception that municipalities are inefficient and things operated by the government are, you know, more costly and inefficient. But when you actually, when you look into it and correct me if I'm wrong, Deborah, that municipally, statistically across the country, municipally owned networks are cheaper and faster. It's not just that fiber is cheaper and faster. It's also that when these utilities are operated by municipalities, when they're publicly owned, they tend to be better for people. We tend, there tend to be faster speeds and slower costs. Is that?
I think, you know, I think it depends on what, you know, what example you're using, but there's certainly, um, plenty of examples where that is the case. I think it's important to realize in this situation that we as a group of communities who are not internet service providers, we're not going to act as the internet service providers here. We're going to do what, you know, Rockport has a, a small 1.5, um, open access fiber network now in the, in the village. And the idea is to, or the plan is to do exactly that type of thing where we own the fiber infrastructure. We then allow, um, internet service providers who do this for a living to come in and bid to provide services to our residents based on that infrastructure. And then they charge the residents and as they charge the residents, there's a lease amount that they have to pay to the towns. And that's, that lease amount, and that's the way it works in Rockport. That lease amount then is what pays off the debt service over time.
Thank you, Deborah. Um, I don't see any hands raised, so, um, Mark, go ahead.
I'll make one more comment. It, it, a nice way to think about it is if, um, the state, the towns, the people own Route 1, they're driving down Route 1, you know, commercial trucks use Route 1 to deliver goods. But if we allow the private companies to own, if we allow them to own Route 1 and charge us tolls to use the road, um, that's sort of the comparison. We will own, the talents will end up owning the, the road for the internet and they will just provide the internet. But we will own the, the roads.
That's right.
Good point, Mark. Thank you. Um, at this point, I'm going to close the, again, Deborah, hang if you don't mind. For a few more minutes, close the public hearing portion and revert to select board deliberation um, on the, um, the approval or not of the draft of this mid-coast community internet coalition and the local agreement, which is in our packet and has been reviewed by Bill Kelly and of course, as just a matter of fact, it's been unanimously approved by the Rockport Select Board last Monday, I think, a week. Any comments, board? Any questions? Motion?
I've got, once you voted on this, I just want to bring something up in terms of funding that I'd like to get your approval to move forward with.
Okay, sure. Um, Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve this for the public, uh, to validate in June.
Second.
Motion made in second discussion, not hearing any roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much, De. Um, this will be moving forward to the warrant in June. Thank you so much, Deborah, for taking the time. Um, you've been buried with this. I know that for a fact and, um, we'll get her done. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Audra, you had a point you wanted to make about funding.
Yeah, so, um, as all of you know, Knox County is set to receive about $7.7 million in, um, American Recovery Plan funding. And when that was, you know, sort of originally decided, it was sort of, you know, nationwide, um, you know, formula that counties based on population get a certain amount. Municipalities based on population also get a certain amount. But it was kind of with the understanding that, um, counties operate in Maine the same way that they do in a lot of other states where they have a lot more responsibilities, authority over things like infrastructure and, you know, other functions that municipalities in Maine are almost exclusively responsible for. So there's, you know, quite a large contingent of communities in Knox County that are going to be requesting that, um, Knox County pass those funds on directly to municipalities because it's intended to be for things like infrastructure. Broadband, of course, being, you know, a really important, um, new piece of infrastructure that we're all, you know, working on, through, you know, groups like, um, this coalition. So I think that the town of Camden in furthering, you know, this goal should be advocating, um, you know, to Knox County for, uh, you know, their funding to be used for this project. And I know Deb has already prepared a letter, um, on behalf of the coalition. But I think that, you know, in addition to supporting the letter, um, you know, of course, that comes from the coalition, um, the board should also specifically write a letter to the county saying that this is what, what you would like done with those funds. I think it's going to be really important. I think you're going to need to, um, pick a representative, whether it be me or one of, one of you or a combination to show up at the county commissioner meetings and advocate for this. Because I think it's really important that those funds end up benefiting municipalities directly, particularly for broadband, because we've all established it as a priority. The coalition's done a lot of work and it could go a long way in, um, you know, being that sort of initial seed funding that's needed to seek more grants and also get started with, you know, the build out of the network that's going to, you know, sort of propagate the rest of the system. So I think, you know, this is a, a huge opportunity. It's going to come fairly soon and we need to be ready for it and we need to be lobbying the county now.
Taylor?
I'm just curious if the county administrator is aware of, um, our ask on this?
Um, I, at this stage, I think that he, he knows it's coming and that's about as, as much as I'm guessing he knows.
Okay, but just, just to this action, I, are you proposing, um, you know, would you draft, want to draft something, Audra, and get it to the board so we can just see what it is? What we're writing it, uh, from, from the town? And, uh, all this is disagreement with that. Will you, um, please board jump in? I don't see any reason why we wouldn't consider sending something like that. Allison?
No, of course we would consider sending something like that, but we've all seen in the past how our advocacy occasionally, I mean, it's just an incredible amount of work sometimes for very little or no results. So I'm, want to make sure we understand all the possible tools. Is this part, would this be part of the budget that they, or the assessment that they've sent to us for this year? How is that? When are those funds going to hit their books or whatever?
I don't know. It's, it's still a question mark as to how we're going to receive all those funds. You know, how much we're going to see, receive at any given time. And, um, I think the mechanism for approval on the county level is going to be the county commissioners. So I think that, you know, as a start, sending out the letters, probably scheduling meeting, a, a meeting with the commissioner that represents our region. Um, and it's person for Camden and Rockport. And also going to the meetings of the county commissioners about this specifically. I think it's going to take a lot of, um, prodding on our part.
I agree.
Yeah. Is it, it's not a Knox County Budget Committee?
I don't believe the budget committee will, I mean, they might choose as part of their process to involve the budget committee. But I don't believe that that's going to be a requirement.
So all of the funds are going only to the county first and us getting any of them depends on the county commissioners deciding.
There's two separate pots of funding. So they'll be funding that 7.7 million that goes directly to the county and then allocations to the municipalities. And as we said before, ours is about $500,000. So we'll, we'll receive that $500,000. The county will receive 7.7 million. But I guess my point is, the reason they're receiving so much is because it's based on the premise that counties in Maine are like counties in Florida or Michigan where they actually do a lot of work in terms of infrastructure and.
Public transportation and planning and, yeah.
Yeah. Counties in Maine just don't. They have a very limited role in what their responsibilities are. So them receiving 7.7 million dollars, unless that money is passed directly onto municipalities, it's not going to be used for what's in, what it's intended to be used for, which is projects like what the coalition is doing. So I, yeah, I.
That's a great point. Yeah.
Since everybody's committed to this, um, that's a really good starting place for where, you know, funding for a regional purpose that's going to a regional entity can be allocated correctly, but it, you know, we're going to need to strongly advocate from the very beginning.
Right. So why don't you proceed with getting the letter drafted, Audra, and to us? And that's, I agree, paper is nice, but presence is better. And maybe you could be a little bit of our coach and forewarn us that when we need to be armed and ready to go someplace.
Yeah. And I mean, Deb has already drafted a great letter that I would just say you should all support now. But I think on top of that, you know, we're going to have to write something individually and we're going to have to start, um, getting this out in front of all of those people that we were just talking about.
That's great. Thank you. And thank you, Deborah, again, for your time. Um, on to June, I guess, is the next step.
Thank you. And thank you, Audra, for that too.
All right. Take care. We're going to close the public hearing now and move on to our, um, our fifth item, which is actually a completion and approval, then approval of the FY 22 budget. Let's suspect we'll need Jody for this, Allison.
Sure. And while I'm doing that, um, would, would it be possible maybe to invite, um, Sharon, it's Sharon Pullman, right? Um, it's, it's often seemed like we should have more contact with her. And maybe it would be good just to invite her to a select board meeting sometime to talk about general county priorities and.
Great idea. That's a great idea.
We do have some projects that we're starting to align with them on, like the solar project at the airport and a few other things.
Good idea. Thank you. Let's, again, move on. If we could bring, yeah, Jody's coming up. As we left two weeks ago, we had gone through virtually every department and, and we, but we had about, oh, I don't know what number, but two, three, four items that we had left as, um, we need to close them. A couple of them were administrative, uh, et cetera. And at least of which was manpower issues for the, or staffing for the town. And I have a list of them here, but they were, and then, and then we get through those and then we can look at, again, where we are total in terms of, uh, both the, uh, the, uh, net increase or decrease in the, in the, um, in the budget from last year as well as the utilization of unassigned funds that we had kind of played with a little bit last week. We never really resolved the final number. So with that, Audra, maybe you could take the lead on a couple that I listed were, um, the, well, it missed two, two areas of administration we talked about. One was, um, planning, economic development area, and the other one was Parks and Rec. Administrative support there, so.
Yes. So maybe it would be best if Jody shared screen.
Share screen. This is your mechanic, huh?
I'm happy to. Um, I'm going to need to log in from my desktop as well. So just if you give me one sec, I'll.
Yeah. My guess is, um, you know, is, is background for Parks and Rec, there's a couple of things that when we were looking at, um, you know, the staffing side of it, uh, that we realized. So we had an employee who moved, um, into a different position and they moved into it, um, in sort of an acting capacity to see if it was a good fit, if they wanted to do it long term. And, um, when that happened, we, uh, unfortunately didn't budget for a replacement for their full-time role because they are going to stay in that position. And so we had to add that back into the budget. And then in addition to that, um, we're looking at sort of another role to, um, address some of the staffing shortages that we talked about, um, when we did the budget workshop. So those, those are sort of the major changes to the Parks and Rec budget. And then also, um, some skate park related expenses that have never been budgeted for.
So let's, let's detail what those are in terms of dollars.
Yes, and that'll, that'll come up when.
Jody gets her screen.
Um, so I'm just trying to see, where's my second screen? I'm kind of novice at this, so, sorry.
Communicating by chewing gum and tapes on somewhere.
Um, let, let me log into my lap, my desktop from up top.
I might be able to do it, um, quickly.
Yeah, I'm only, only, I'm kind of worried because I'll lose my, my desktop and I won't be able to make changes, Audra. So that might be an issue.
Yeah, good point, because we need to, we need to track what we're doing.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, sorry. I didn't have access for those because I wasn't logged in. I thought.
I didn't think you authorized.
Thought I got shut out of it. All right.
Something's popping up.
Oh, good. Okay.
We have, we have ignition.
All right, let me find.
You're looking for, um, parks?
Yes.
Is this it? Audra, I can't see the titles, but.
No, this is, uh. Okay.
Here we go. The recreation, yep.
That's recreation and what we need is parks.
Yep. Got it.
All right, here we go.
Okay. I don't see any yellow.
So it's all in the orange.
Oh, good. Nice color. So why don't you take us through what's, what's increased and how much and why?
All right, so, um, the biggest difference is to the full-time wages. And that is increased by, um, about 40,000. And the part-time wages is decreased
Oh.
as a result, um, because we'd be using, you know, that, that position would be converted to full-time.
as a result, um, because we'd be using, you know, that, that position would be converted to full-time. And then the uh, subsequent changes to the benefits.
Which is thirty-one, nine, two, sixty-six or about forty-four thousand, right? No, sorry. About thirty, uh, thirty, uh, four.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-four, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. So the to, I mean, there's no real change to the public restroom wages. It's still twenty-four, one. That's not changed, correct?
Um, that's correct.
And there's a slight increase to, well, it's like a, in a, by the way, we didn't count FICA to Mark's math. Uh, and, and personal, that's, that's fifteen plus, that's, I'm sorry, is two, two thousand plus five, eight thousand. So eight thousand and um, plus um, say, uh, thirty-four thousand for benefits. So the benefits are up forty-two thousand and salaries are up um, net uh, one forty, about thirty thousand dollars, correct? If I, I was taking the credit for the, the fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, it's more than that. It's actually nineteen thousand dollars from the full, part-time wages, which is a, a negative and the increase on the full-time wages is um, let's see exactly the forty-four thousand, right?
I mean, all up, it's a seventy thousand dollar difference or sixty-six thousand dollar difference.
Okay. Total.
Yes, wages and benefits.
Well, in, so in a sense, um, the, the, I mean, not talking job description, but each person is about thirty-three K. But it sounds too low.
Um, it's really based on their, their years of service. Um, we had to bring, we have one um, vacancy right now that was not included in the original
Yes.
um, budget. So I, I added that in and then we have added an additional position to the parks maintenance line. And so with the benefits, the, the increase is, is because you can't, you have to bank on a family plan, which is
Yeah, yeah, most expensive.
Pricey, so, yeah.
But we feel comfortable that, uh, on average, two, two uh, positions of about thirty-three thousand each.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's a little more complicated than that because we're moving things around a little bit. We're not budgeting for as much part, in part-time wages because we're going to fill that with full-time wages.
Well, I thought you said the total net add and what's the total net add?
Total net add for wages and benefits is sixty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, that's
Adding to full-time and re, and removing the part-time wages.
Well, the net, the net is sixty-six thousand. So, so on the average, each individual, because I hear, I heard two individuals uh, are about thirty-three thousand.
Well, I, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at that way because it, that, I mean, let's just say that adding two full-time positions to this budget increases it by sixty-six thousand dollars for wages and benefits.
Okay, fine. I get it. Comments, Board?
Oh, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding, but um,
Yes.
Um, and I'm, I'm not saying that in a, in a negative way. I am, is this all a result of the conversation that we had during the workshop?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that happened. One, we realized that we had forgotten to um, budget for a vacant position. So we needed to add that back in anyway. And then two, on top of that, um, to address the, you know, sort of staffing shortage issues, we added in another full-time position. So this is a result of, of that.
So I feel, um, so how, about how much of the total difference is because of just a mistake that so I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of what, how much we're changing and how much of this is based on our feedback and
Well
Like, what would it have been if you had not forgotten the full-time position before, or the other position before?
So one, that position that was left out of the um, the department head request to about thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight?
That's, that's, yep. So that's now back in there and um, then we added an additional position.
But Jody, is that thirty-eight include benefits?
Um, that includes health insurance and wages.
So that position is, has been an established position. It's scope and responsibility are what that position has been. That's not really a, uh, the most important thing to me in my higher labels, what they're doing, you know?
Right. It, it really just comes down to, um, at the time that, that my, that I was doing the wage calculation sheet back in uh, February, maybe January, we actually were short one full-time position and had left. And so I, I didn't base it on that.
That person, that person's position does, doesn't have a title? Or it's just
Have it as, just as grounds, grounds maintenance, park grounds maintenance.
So that, that's the scope of that person's role. But is the scope of the second person's role?
That one is also grounds maintenance.
So we're adding, and why do we need more grounds maintenance beyond what we've had before?
This, this would be um, converting it from a part-time position to a full-time position would be in response to the addition of a more parks.
So would it make sense to go back and change the department head request to actually reflect what it is? I mean, it's, it gets messy when we realize something so late. I guess, but it would, it seems like all, so initially what we looked at was that the, for FY twenty-two, the department had request was a four point five percent increase. But really, the department had increased, you know, requested increase was four point five percent plus thirty-eight thousand dollars, whatever that works out to be. So it was, and so I'm trying to
You want to give me like five minutes? I can make that happen on here.
Allison, we have a couple of people raised their hands. And in a second, we can bring them on. Mark, go ahead.
Um, so basically, to, without looking at the numbers and trying to figure out where the money comes from, we're adding a half a person. We're adding, making a part-time person a full-time person. That's really the only change because we just hadn't filled the job that the person had left, even though we planned on doing that. And those numbers. So basically, we're making a part-time person full-time. Is that basically the nature of the change?
Yeah, I would say that that's the, that's the most significant change.
Right, okay.
But it shouldn't result in such a large increase.
Well, it had, it, it, it has.
That alone.
Well, well, yeah, that alone, it has. It's, it's about sixty-six thousand up to, I was just trying to figure out to
Take sixty-six thousand and subtract thirty-eight and that's the, that's the difference.
Right, which is, uh, which is about twenty, whatever thousand dollars. Trace it's
Twenty-eight.
Thirty-eight. What was that?
I'm about to add in what it would be had I not left out that other person, so.
One second, I'm just trying to get my screen so I can see the numbers here. I've got pictures in front of it. Okay. Divide it by
It's twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, the, the Say again?
It's, it's twenty-eight. The addition or the um, making that role full-time for the wages and benefits increases it by twenty-eight thousand.
Allison, could you bring on, well, that's one, I think it's one person that
Yeah, I mean, we might want to define whether this is a budget conversation or whether we're going to talk about the skate park right now, but um,
Good question. Well, that's what
I don't know, just if, but I guess it's all kind of intertwined. If you want me, you want me just to go there, too. We have um, Janice Gates and Joshua more, so I will promote them to panelists and see if it, you can
Then we'll make a judgment of what they're talking about or not.
We're talking about the skate park and another agenda item, right?
Right, but it's, you know, it's clearly relevant here also, so.
Because um, I think some of this discussion being generated by the skate park, at least, which means it's four thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, who do we have, Allison?
Um, right now, we have uh, Janice Gates was first and
Okay.
Also brought in Josh Moore. Now, um, Larry Christman, I think it's Larry, um, has also raised his hand, but maybe we wanted to, you can define which
Yep.
Conversation we're going to have now.
Do you have a comment on this budget line?
Me? I do not. I'm interested to hear what our, our participants have to say.
I'm sorry, who's talking?
I think she said, I think he may have said Janice and not Janos.
I was talking to Janice Gates.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Bob. Thanks. I appreciate that. I'm just curious. Um, obviously, I see the four thousand dollars for the skate park, but it, it sounds like we're not being really clear about this part-time position going into a full-time position, what that role is and what those job responsibilities are being. And I'm curious as to whether that's staffing for the skate park. Um, I'm also curious, uh, if we have a shortage of people that are applying for jobs, why we are then uh, looking for people to fill positions that we can't fill as it is. From what I'm hearing from you, but I'm mostly curious about that four thousand dollars for the park and I'm curious about um, this additional staffing that sounds like it's, I, I, I'm not getting a really clear sense of what that role is about and um, why a position would be moved from a part-time to a full-time position with the added uh, wages with um, you know, benefits, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Janice. Audra, can you answer that question?
Yeah, it, it certainly is. The need for a full-time position certainly is necessitated by having a skate park.
So you're going to have somebody out there full, full-time? Is that the idea?
They wouldn't be there full-time, but um, converting it from a part-time, because currently that, we do have a part-time uh, parks maintenance position in the summer months. So converting it from a part-time position to a full-time position um, would be for part of, of um, the hours allocated to that position to be at the skate park.
I'm a little cu- curious as to why um, why there's a need to, to have staffing added to that park when we've got a whole lot of, uh, quite frankly, a lot of people that are not interested in following the rules that are out there right now. We've also got a, a pretty um, a, a pretty big deal with those kids feeling like uh, they're entitled to be out there all night long. And, and I know that I'm moving this into a different conversation, but you're talking about my tax dollars. And I think I have a right to say something about that. And I also have a right to explain to you what it's been like to have kids out there after five o'clock when those hours were posted on your Facebook page for that park. And when uh, you know, when, when uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock goes and there's still kids out there. Um, when I feel like I should be able to go out there and have a conversation with those kids and talk about their needs and, and the neighbors' needs, w- why it, it's um, you know, wh- what they get is more. They get uh, you know, a note from the Parks and Rec people to say, you know, just take this to those neighbors over there and tell them that um, they can call us, they can email us. We have Beth Ward and Holly Anderson. And, and let them know that you can, you know, we've extended the hours when um, we weren't aware of that. And my bigger issue is that, that, you know, I've gone out there and tried to have conversations with those kids. I've tried to talk to them about, you know, process, process. And talking to the town about what their needs are in terms of the equipment that is in terrible shape, the trash that's all over the place, which is their responsibility. Um, and the fact that they feel like they deserve more. But, you know, when I go out to chat with them, the response that I get is um, I get accosted by fifteen of them that are waiting for me behind my house, knowing the path that I walk with my dog and knowing that I'm going to be walking up and um, hearing them taunt and yell at me and, and say, you know, if you keep calling the cops, this is what you're going to get. And they continue to circle in the back of my house and then come around to the front. And I'm sure you've all been down Alden Street. You know what my house looks like. You know what my front lawn looks like. They make an effort to ride their bikes across that little strip of grass that I call my front lawn to make a point of intimidating me and others because they feel that they deserve to be out there all the time. And it's not fair. I don't feel comfortable in this neighborhood. I don't feel comfortable going out. I have to be careful about which direction I go. I have to be careful about what time of the day it is because at a certain time, I know the police are over there trying to close that park down and they're all gonna rally up and come in front of our house and stand in front of our windows and flip us the bird until they know that they've been seen. And then they're going to ride off.
Okay, yes, I'm gonna, um, I, you're, I, you're, I can feel your, your pain through here.
Really upset about it. I am.
But I want to, we're at a moment, so we're trying to
I know, we can get back to that budget. And I know that Josh has things to contribute, others do as well. And I'm, I'm open to hearing that.
You're asking
I think you, you all need to hear it.
But you'll find, I get it. You're asking a very good question and I think in fairness, I think Audra, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what, what we have done here is we we, the, the town has, has, has established another park. On the skate park, um, with, for which the town at this moment has the responsibility of doing something with, correct?
Yeah, I would say if you're gonna, if you're gonna um, have new facilities that we're responsible for, then things like what Janice is saying is going to happen unless we have resources to um, be able to manage it. So what I'm doing is saying, these are the resources I need to better manage it.
I understood. That's what I'm trying to
I think that this has been, I'm sorry to interrupt, Bob, but you know, this had, this was established as a temporary park. And, and what my hope was, and I think what my neighbors' hopes were, was that we could all find some middle ground. And where the, the kids would be able to skate there and we would be able to have um, some, some nice quieter evenings where we can um, you know, visit with each other. It's, you know, we're still only doing outdoor socializing. And so that's a little bit of our space, too. And, and that they would follow the rules and the guidelines that the town put forth. And they've not followed any of those things. There's been trash all over the place, empty bottles of wine, empty beer cans. It's spreading out into the parking lot behind here. So I appreciate that you want to provide some resources for them, but they're not doing any of their piece of this. They're not doing anything, any of the guidelines that have been out there. And Allison, I don't know, maybe you need to recuse yourself because I know you've got kids that are out there, too. And I know that, that they're out there in the back in that group circling around my house, trying to tell me how to act and what to do. Can I speak?
One second.
I, you know,
One second, just one
I would like to be able to, to talk for a second. This, we, this is a
I understand. I want you to speak in a second. I just wanted to ask Janice. Um, we, it was established that this budget at this point in time is affected by the skate park, no question. Um, and Allison, just one second, please. I just wanted to ask one more question of Audra. Um, some months ago, we were, read a letter from uh, individuals in the, in the, in the, um, in the, in the town saying, you know, we want to do this, we want to help, we want to fundraise and, and, and support this whole activity. What happened to that? One second, please.
There's a whole thing about this, but
Okay, I just, that's the question. Please answer that and go to Allison.
Uh, point of order.
Yes, sir.
We're on the budget. If we're going to have this discussion about the holistic view of the state skate park, I'd like it to be on the proper agenda item. Because I can see this is the railing quickly.
I would agree with the point of order. Allison, would you please comment and, and
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's basically my point because right now, if we try to use the budget as a way to define exactly how we're going to fix the skate park issues, we're going to argue forever. This was a response to, and also, first of all, I just need to address my address my kids are eight and 11 and they don't go to the skate park. And so I'm just.
Go to the skate park.
That.
You go to the skate park.
What?
What?
Who's talking?
This is, I mean, I, if one of my kids has been at the skate park, that I haven't been able to get them to go to the skate park. I have an eight-year-old and an 11-year-old. Um, and if you haven't, if anybody has an issue with, like, I mean, I would be really surprised if one, they don't get to do things like that without their parents. So I don't know what, where this is coming from. But, um, this, the, this entire, not everybody was a part of our workshop. Um, and there was discussion about Parks and Rec not having enough resources to do a, a wide variety of things that different residents in town would like them to do, but then also being kind of like pushed over the edge by the skate park because of a problem that we all actually agree on that it isn't working out right now. This isn't the way anybody wants it to be. We do not want any residents to be in the position of having to enforce rules that is toxic, that is a failure on everyone's part that this is, that this is happening. And the idea that could just all work out fine without oversight isn't working out. And so this discussion about adding some more money to the Parks and Rec budget is, was kind of like a in case we have to do it type of thing, um, that what we would like is for the Y to take it over. The Y isn't, hasn't been interested in that. Um, we would like for groups of parents and volunteers to fundraise and to take over the responsibility of monitoring for that all to work out. Um, it just opened again for the season. People are out there again, and there are definitely problems. And you're right, Janice. Um, so that, I, we, I don't think we can figure, we need to save that discussion for how we're exactly, we're gonna fix the issue. But the idea of adding staffing wasn't to try to, you know, make it more fun or to reward anybody for bad behavior. It would be to try and prevent neighbors from having to fulfill the role that, um, is left by a lack of staffing and a lack of monitoring because clearly they're not, the people who are using it now are not able to monitor themselves. It's not working out. So.
All right, we, we've, uh, we've beaten on this one a little bit. Uh, thanks, Janice. We don't want to work into a skateboard discussion. We'll get that in a few minutes. But I think it's clear, thanks to your question, because you did clarify that, yes, some of these dollars are related to the skateboard in terms of labor is absolutely true. And the select would have to consider that. Thank you very much, Janice. Just, you know, hang in. Um, and we had a few other people raise their hands. Um, if they're raising their hands to, uh, talk about the skate park, we're not gonna attempt, uh, uh, go deeper into that at this point in time. If it's a question about the, the budget, uh, the magnitude of the budget, it's clear that some of those monies are for, um, adding a person to, to manage the skate park. Um, if, if you have your hand up to talk to, uh, something other than the skate park, please keep your hand up. Otherwise, please take them down. Um, we still have, um, Josh's hand up.
Yes, my question was simply, Bob, um, if, if our question is about the budget as it relates to the skate park, will you, uh, take any questions regarding that? Because that is my question.
I, I don't understand your question.
Um, I guess what I'm looking for is a little bit more clarity about what that $4,000 is actually going to fund. Um, and is that, uh, to, is, is to take the weight off as it is right now? That, that role has been filled by the police department. They've been coming by, closing the park down and maintaining some, some sense of order. And so I'm just trying to find out if that is.
Audrey, can you answer that?
I think we're also trying to figure this out. I mean, I don't need to know. We don't even have consensus on this yet. We haven't even voted to do anything. Yeah, so it's hard to.
I agree. Yeah, we noted your question. Thank you, Josh. Thank you. Um, we're gonna, we'll move back to budget discussion now, uh, for, but that's what we have to do in the board. And what, definitely want the board to understand who and what the money is for. And we do, I think we have a pretty clear vision of that. Do I have, I'd like to hear some of the board members as to the comments on, on this budget change, who wants to lead? I can't see anybody's hands, but.
I'm giving everybody else a chance first.
I'll, I'll start. This is, this is Mark. I'll start. Um, I think that the Parks Department is overwhelmed with responsibility and, and could use the help. And basically, essentially, as, as I mentioned earlier, we're basically increasing one part-time job to a full-time job. And I think that's, that's important. I'm in support of that.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Taylor, Ben Z.
Um, yeah, I agree with Mark. I think that we've heard even, um, without the skate park, uh, even if you remove that from the equation, we've been hearing from Audrey and from Beth that the need for more people to take care of what we have now is necessary. So I think the increase makes sense regardless of the skate park. Um, obvi- obviously, that's gonna be a discussion that we're gonna have later on tonight and in the days and months to come, no doubt. Um, I think it makes sense to keep it in there, um, so that if, um, the skate park does continue to be a part of the town, we have the resources ready to do that. We're not playing catch-up. Um, and then it allows us to have a discussion knowing that the resources are possible.
So you're basically saying, Taylor, keep the numbers in so we have the placeholder. We can always not spend the money later.
Exactly.
Okay, just wanted to be succinct. Thank you. Uh, who else? Uh, Allison, I think you're the only other person with your hand up so far. Allison.
Um, sorry, yeah, sorry. Um, I support what Mark is saying, that just taking somebody from part-time to full-time makes sense. And I also, you know, agree with Taylor that we've taught, it is not just the skate park. Um, there's clearly been a backlog of things identified with many of our parks. And they are much more numerous than people realize. Um, but looking at just the difference from the FY21, go, you know, going from 274,000 to 356,000. It's that, I mean, we're looking at a 30% increase in the Parks and Rec budget. And so that just doesn't, I, I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding exactly how much more we're getting for that. Um, and is this, is that, is that a sustainable kind of thing? I also really do want to exhaust the opportunities for getting other groups to take over the skate park. And we'll have that discussion later. But I don't want our vote here to be interpreted as a, well, you know, we approve having a, you know, being in charge of the skate park forever and having it there forever and all this stuff. Um, what are, what else is this gonna allow us to do? To, you know, a 30%, we, we were increasing the Parks and Rec budget by 30%. How beyond the skate park, what is that gonna allow for?
I mean, I would say just primarily, there are a lot of, um, you know, we, we, we basically just have the capacity to, to mow, do basic groundskeeping right now. Um, anything, so, you know, things like, you know, Beans Cliff, they needed, um, those bridges repaired. And, you know, we, we weren't able to do stuff like that because we just didn't, they, they didn't have the time. They didn't have the amount of people. So it's just sort of basic things that need to be done to make repairs to the amenities in our parks that we just don't have the staff available to do currently with, at our current levels. Because they're, they're basically just mowing.
Okay, so the people that we have, they're able to do things like that, like build small bridges and, you know, general building maintenance and.
Right, but now it's just emptying trash cans and mowing.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that that wouldn't then have to be something that we could, would contract out for. But if they have, most of them have that, those kinds of skills to chip away at that stuff. Um, yeah, I mean, I feel comfortable with it because I get a lot of comments from people just saying, hey, at Barrett's Cove, I want this. And at Lake Beach, the barbecue grill things aren't working. And there's just a ton of stuff. And it's just, we haven't been able to get to it. So I, I, I mean, I guess I, with everyone else in terms of being supportive and hoping that we don't have to spend money on the skate park. Again, that $4,000, I think, is there as a just-in-case, but they, um, there, there is a GoFundMe campaign that, um, I think we'll probably hear about later and a willingness to start with the fundraising. So hopefully this isn't necessary.
Yeah, I would have to, uh, Allison, you kind of hit where I'm coming from in this. This is the, we have a, um, certainly replacing the person that was missing, I get that. I'm still not sure why it says dramatic increase from, um, FY21 to '22. I'm missing some of the numbers, I think, but whatever it is, it is. But, but I, we, we had a conversation in our workshop about Parks and Rec, about how our parks need work. We have 20-something parks that everyone built, you need to fix what we have already before we go adding a lot of stuff. Um, and we talked about raising the, the maintenance budget and a few other things. And we asked Beth to consider doing a, um, identify and, and, and plan out over the next few years, the maintenance we have to do in those parks. Um, if, if, if this, if mine is, proves from my perspective, I'm not approving the money spent on maintaining the skate park. So I think there's a lot of work we need to do with Parks and Rec to support what we need to do, what we already have on our plate, Audrey. I think we already have a lot on our plate with our parks right now without the skate park. Um, I, I would agree with Allison. If they were gonna do a, a placeholder, fine, but I don't want, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna approve it for, um, for, for, for a lot of that money going to a skate park. I mean, that has to be addressed in parallel. You know, I mean, we can, we can attack that as we go forward. We're not gonna solve that here. But with that, Board, what do you, what recommendation do you have in terms of this budget item? Do I have a motion to accept?
Audrey, can you just recap real quick, um, um, how this came up late and didn't make it in the Budget Committee process for people that weren't here?
Yes, so, um, you know, as, as we were, you know, discussing with, at the Select Board Workshop, um, sort of additional needs. Um, you know, we were talking about sort of departments that, um, sort of the expectation around what they're doing isn't, isn't really matching what they're, what they're able to do, um, because of staffing shortages, the most obviously being Parks and Rec, given the amount of parks that they're responsible for maintaining and the amount of staff that they have to do it. And so after that discussion with the Select Board, as well as, you know, sort of the, um, addition of, you know, other, other amenities over the, the last few years. Um, so that's, that's why we, you know, went back and sort of looked at, um, you know, the staffing levels in the Parks Department and, um, you know, wanted to make sure that they were up to date. And, you know, it is a good thing that we did that because that's how we found out that we made a mistake and we left out uh, one position that we needed to budget for and fill, um, as well as, you know, um, looking at part-time positions that, um, might be easier to fill and, and easier to do more work with if they were full-time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Board, we need to take an action on this. Mark?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, Select Board budget of, uh, $356,210 with the, uh, additions that have been described so far.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussions? Not hearing any last or roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Bob, aye, five zero. Thank you. Audrey, what other, uh, changes, uh, do we need to look at based on last time we talked about other labor? Is there anything else or, or whatever, whatever else you have?
So we did talk about planning and development, but frankly, I'm pretty uncomfortable suggesting anything specific um, in terms of an addition to, uh, resources or staffing levels or anything for that department. I just think that, um, this is a lot for one year and I don't think we know um, exactly what we're going to need in the Planning Development and Development Department going forward, given all of the effort that we're gonna be put into, um, trying to make that operate, that office operate more efficiently with some of the, um, you know, uh, digitization and, and online services with like permitting and, um, you know, having the ordinance online and all of that. My hope is that that's going to free up a lot of, um, time that's currently spent by, you know, the administrative assistant and the code enforcement officer, and even the Planning and Development Director, who are really just searching through the ordinance and, and give, you know, printing it out for people and showing it to them and sort of explaining it to them. Um, you know, a lot of things that if people could easily and quickly look through the ordinance on their own, it would free up a lot of that capacity. So my hope is that, um, you know, it'll, staffing needs or, or maybe a, a lack thereof will become clearer over the next year. So I, I really wasn't comfortable proposing anything for that department, even though we talked about it. Um, and then with GIS, we did add in an additional $2,000 at the, at, when we had the, um, Select Board Budget Workshop to look at, um, you know, sort of additional, it's more of maintenance and, um, development of, uh, you know, capacity within, um, our GIS systems. So it's that sort of generalized, um, increase in capacity that that additional funding would, um, go towards. Mark?
Audrey, would you say what GIS stands for, please?
Uh, Global Information System. So it's like mapping data.
So is there a line I didn't, they're gonna show us to just increases by 2,000?
No, because we already talked about it during our budget. Like, you already added it in.
That's fine. Anything else, anything else, Audrey?
So the only other thing, to go down to sort of capital projects, and these are, these are really big. So I just wanna say, I, I'm just gonna give you the numbers and explain the projects. I didn't add them in. Um, so there are some, you know, big needs in terms of, um, public open spaces. And I already sort of explained to you that Beth Ward had, um, come with an ask of, you know, a, a $50,000 to make improvements to Short Tail Point. Um, but after sort of going through the exercise of looking at the, um, sketch plan that they had and then speaking with, um, engineers and contractors for doing things like, um, you know, paving the driveway into short tail with, um, permeable pavement and making the driveway permeable pavement and then doing some other, you know, improvements like adding amenities and some of the, um, you know, addressing some of the, um, you know, riverbank, um, type issues. Um, that's, that's a big project, like about $300,000. So I do think that, you know, that's the sort of project that it would be good, a good candidate for a land and water conservation fund grant. But still, that would be about a 50% match. So we'd be looking, looking at contributing $150,000 and then applying for $150,000 grant. And we don't really wanna compete with ourselves because we are gonna be applying for one this year for the snowball.
Okay. Are you, are you referring to, to the, just the Short Tail Point redevelopment, which is a $100,000 number in here?
I don't, I don't have it in there. We can.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so what you do have in here is some monies, $70,000 for seeing a little restoration, correct? You do, that's, I'm seeing, it's orange.
Yeah. Are these, are these, these are things you're, you're suggesting but are not added in right now, the ones in orange?
So, yeah, the, um, actually, there, yeah, it's, it's added in an orange. So that's 70,000. Um, okay, let's go back to the shirt tail. That, that would be for like a match for a land and water conservation fund grant. So that's one capital improvement. Another one is, um, Curtis Island, they've, they've come to me and this kind of came about, um, you know, when the Budget Committee was, was finishing up, they've got a quote for about $50,000 to paint all the structures on Curtis Island. And so they wanted me to ask the Select Board about, um, funding that. And then, um, $10,000 would be for getting the power connected and potentially wireless service for some sort of, um, webcam system at the skate park. And then the 70,000, the, um, that's really kind of like a grant match to have that ready. Um, if we find a grant opportunity, and there are a few that have sort of come and gone, but we weren't ready to apply at that point. Um, and that could be, that would be offset with the use of TIF funds. So that's sort of a cost-neutral one. Um, and really, it's kind of having that money on hand for a grant. So really, the three that. Um and really, it's kind of having that money on hand for a grant. So really, the three that would have a budgetary impact are the ones in orange down there. So the camera system, the shirt tail point redevelopment and the Curtis Island painting.
What? Just a period. What is the total number for the shirt till point redevelopment?
It's about three hundred thousand dollars. But I mean, that's 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 if we did every single thing um that you know, has been sort of looked at for that area, which I don't think is necessarily done to solve some of the issues there with, you know, the erosion of the driveway and.
Mark?
Uh um really quickly, looking at these, here are my feelings. The seawall river restoration is really important. And if that's TIF money and it's not going to affect our budget. Um and when you that I'm in support of that. Uh ten thousand dollars for the skate park camera system. I'm distressed to hear about the problems we've had there. Um if we continue to have the skate park, I think it's important to have. Um sure tail point, you you just mentioned that we're looking for a grant for the snowball. We just discussed how overworked our parks and rec people are now. And we're trying to bring them up a a half a person job just to try and help them catch up to what we do. It's not something we need right now. At some point after the sidewalk, maybe perhaps is finished. Uh we can readdress that, but I don't think we need it right now. And Curtis Island painting projects, I'm interested in why all of a sudden they came to us? Why haven't they been presenting a budget? You know, a plan in two thousand ten, we're going to need this. In two thousand twenty, we're going to need this. In two thousand thirty, we're going to need this. Why all of a sudden at the last minute are we being presented with this? Why isn't there a maintenance plan that they've been working on? Those are my questions.
Well, I would say for Curtis Island, they really they have been trying to apply for grants to do a lot of this stuff. Um but I do think that sort of like the most expensive way that those buildings um would, yeah, this is the most expensive solution to that problem.
Yeah, I would agree. Um but to the point Mark is um making, I honestly, I just feel like we're trying to digest a lot of information at the eleventh hour. Um I would certainly feel that way about uh the um Curtis Island Painting Project for sure. I uh we've been we've been talking about library and and other in in parks and wreck and about budgeting and doing maintenance and planning. I I I the the short tail point redevelopment is is too my pain too much of a nut to to swallow right now. However, I do think that there are remedial work that should absolutely be done to be referred to, Audra, in terms of the 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 issues at short tail, the erosion and, you know, you know, the the driveway, etc., but not not this uh total sounds like four hundred thousand dollars worth of work, whatever total is, three or four hundred thousand dollars. Um and yeah, to the point of the, yeah, this this skate park seems to be mushrooming by the minute. And um uh ten thousand, by the way, is small enough that if we ever determined we needed something, we do have some contingency to play with and deal with that later, but uh trying to plan it specifically to me is it's a little bit aggressive at this point in time. But I want to hear from other board members in their opinions here. Um Taylor, Jenna, Allison?
Curious about the Curtis Island painting. Um you said they had a quote um. How does that typically work for us maintaining buildings out there? What is the what is the scope of responsibility for us versus the caretakers, et cetera, in terms of finances and and the history is a little muddy in my eyes.
I mean, I I'm it's really unclear to me. I I do think it, you know, at one point um they were able to sort of do a little bit more with uh volunteer labor and you know, a a few other things that they had in place. I just think over the years, it's been more and more difficult for them to sort of keep up with the level of maintenance that's sort of necessary for the buildings out there. But, uh you know, and they have, they have been really um diligent about trying to apply for grants to to, you know, get a lot of this work done. They did get a grant um to replace the windows and and do all that sort of work. Um but I guess I would make the point that they're, you know, they're they're very responsible and sort of bringing these issues to our attention, but um some of the some of the things that they want done where I'm I'm not saying they're not important and they certainly need to be addressed and it's part of maintain historic buildings, but sort of higher standard of um it's it's, yeah, I guess doing this project at that level of funding at this time would be like a it it would be a higher standard of maintenance applied to those buildings than a lot of other historic buildings that we own and and take care of. Like, look at the Opera House in the state that that was in of investment that we needed to bring that up to speed. That was, you know, we've been a real long time on that one and um I'm not saying that that's what we want to do with everything, but I'm just saying Curtis Island and all those buildings will still be there next year at the time when we're discussing the budget.
Yeah, I that's sort of my sense, too. I feel like um I think it would be smart to have a kind of a clear view of the responsibility and um because if if we're looking at them as Curtis Island is often overlooked in terms of who's responsible for what. It's just one of those things where the relationship for for a number of years, I'm not even super familiar with it. Very few people are um is unclear. And so I think that if we're going to be spending large sums of money on maintenance, that, you know, I'd like to kind of know what Dave St. Laurent thinks about how those building works perhaps. And if we're going to be doing big painting projects, um should we put them out to bid? I think just having one quote for fifty thousand dollars to paint all the buildings um makes me a little uncomfortable.
Allison?
I actually think this conversation is really unfair to be having right now because there's a huge, this is extremely blurry between the recommendations of the Historic Resources Committee and the actual caretakers um that they've done a a a massive amount, in terms of the caretakers have done a massive amount over the years. And there have been times where they they submit a report to us. We have a conversation with them. There's an agreement that we we, the Select Board, this Select Board, everybody here right now. We agreed to it and we had a conversation. And now I I don't know where this fifty thousand dollars came from, but I and the grants are all that's all historic resources. So I'm I'm just a little concerned that we have a lot of volunteers and people that are doing a great job out there and that it might that our conversation here is making it seem like somebody hasn't presented a plan or hasn't done a good job. So um I I don't think that in their most recent report, I did not see that there was an urgent need for painting. They've done a lot just themselves over the years, but in terms of the caretakers. I have seen that like the Historic Resources Committee is really um diligent about noticing all of the, you know, historic aspects of the building and they've done, you know, they're they really want to stay on top of this and they've looked at the windows and there's there's definitely a high standard um there. And so I just want to be careful that we don't confuse those two things and that we should probably have a larger conversation.
I don't think any any of this is coming out. This is more of coming out of you have um a group of people who are doing a really great job and they're trying to be incredibly proactive and maybe proactive to a higher standard than what we necessarily are like across all of the buildings that we own because we we need to prioritize in a certain way. So I so I think that I don't want to confuse this in the way that I've asked about it. I'm bringing it to you to ask about it because in their in their desire to be proactive, they've asked me to bring this to you.
And who's they?
Um that is a combination of um David Conover and Michael Scaling.
Okay.
But your resources working together.
One of the time, please. Um uh I agree with all that. I think they do a great job. This is all about timing to me. This is right. I'm going to bring this thing at this. We're bringing, in my opinion, we're we're in that gray zone of just jumping the gun on a bunch of line items that's inappropriate this hour. I don't mean the time of day. I'm talking.
And I do think there are, given that, given that you've added resources to our Parks and Rec Department, um I do think that we're this is the sort of project that we might have additional people to help out with. Um and and also I want to be very clear that they didn't come and say, oh, this is a fifty thousand dollar bill. It needs to be done now. They came and they had it broken down by building and said it's going to be more cost effective to do it all at once, but we could, you know, any help that you can give on any component here is going to be um
Very clear.
For, you know, maintaining all the facilities that are out there. So just in that in the totality of the conversation, you know, me boiling it down to like a one number to put in a budget, it loses all that nuance.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. Very well put. Mark, one other comment?
I was just going to say um this weekend, I'm actually in in Massachusetts at the moment on a on a family vacation for school break. And yesterday we visited a a a lighthouse and and a building. And I commented to my wife that the building that accompanied the lighthouse was in terrible condition and it was very depressing to see. I thought, why can't this this particular town do a better job of taking care of it? Certainly want to take care of Curtis Island. It's important. It's thing, but there's not enough information here. You know, when does this need to be done? What are what are the options we have? Can it be done in one year, two years? You know, we need more information than just, oh, by the way, we need fifty thousand dollars.
Right. And they and they have provided a lot more information, but like I'm saying, in trying to give you a number for this budget for this purpose, I didn't give you all that background information.
That's fine.
Okay. So my question is, if we do not okay this money, where do they stand? What is there any jeopardy to the buildings? That's what's important here. That's something I don't know is what happens if we don't take care of it in this budget cycle?
Well, it's not like that. It's, I mean, really what we need here is your recommendation, Audra, on what, I mean, this is, that's the this line, it's all supposed to be what you recommend and then we react to that. So.
But what I would say is they've asked me to bring it to you. I would not recommend you spend fifty thousand on that this year. I think that um one thing that we can commit to is um staff resources to help with paint that's um technically achievable and maybe more urgent. So um I would rather go that route than um, you know, uh giving giving cash to get a contractor out there.
Audra, is there any um you that's clear, we could uh well, take it out. Um the ten thousand is, we know what that is. The seventy thousand is covered. Is 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 there, question mark, is there to the hundred to to this shirt tail point redevelopment, if we wanted to put in monies to do some fixes out there, what would it be?
Well, you know, I do. I do agree with the premise that this is probably not a, you know, this is something that we can wait until FY twenty three to do. Um it would be good to have these funds available just with grant timing the way it is. Um but I do, I see everyone's point. Um but, you know, we've already added a lot into the budget in terms of capital projects and I feel like if you're going to make a sacrifice, that that's a that's an acceptable one to make for FY twenty two in favor of maybe funding that project in FY twenty three. I just, I, you know, and a lot of this is just to make the point, there are a lot of public open spaces that do require a lot of investment.
Yeah, yeah. It's huge. It's huge. That's to our point we made in the workshop was exactly that. We need to lay these projects out over to your point, Audra, over the fiscal years to see when we need to bring these in, rather than try to knee jerk react at this point, in my opinion.
Right. And I guess like like I said before, I didn't, I didn't recommend it in my version of the budget because I, you know, it's it's a sacrifice that I thought needed to be made in favor of other priorities.
Mark?
Uh Baba, I'd like to make a motion um that of the four items listed, uh we authorized the seventy thousand dollars for seawall river restoration. Um and at this point, we do not authorize the ten thousand for the skate park camera system, the hundred thousand dollars for shirt point and the fifty thousand dollar for Curtis Island. And we'll address those at a later time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And Jody, while we're talking here, um in a minute, we'll make whatever change is necessary. Uh further discussion. Allison?
Is there, are there reserve funds for any of these items? Like, is there a Curtis Island Reserve Fund? Is there a?
Um I do think that there is some money that we've carried forward um that has been spent from Curtis Island. Um I don't know how much is left in that account.
What about a parks parks or parks and rec reserve?
We have a we have a parks and open space reserve that has thirty thousand in it, but I know Beth has some.
Your mark, your mark.
Ideas for that.
Are we putting anything in there this year?
I don't believe we budgeted to do that.
I don't think we. That's the kind of thing I could get behind more, like recognizing that we have tons of projects that are going to require matching funds for grants and all this stuff. Um we probably do need to be putting away more money. And so I don't, I don't want to, I think Audra is right that we need to be more honest with ourselves and with everybody about the amount of money that our parks are going to take to maintain um.
Is is the one you're highlighting, the one uh Jody, if we put that in?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself?
I just said um went to Alison's point. If we were going to put a few thousand dollars in that bucket, uh that's where we would put it on this account you just highlighted.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a tendency to agree. I don't think we're budgeting enough for parks and open space and we should probably carry something forward um and and keep building this account because I I think no matter what dollars you put in, it's going to, it's going to be pale in comparison to what's really needed from what I understand of the parks, current parks right now.
Um yeah. And and then Audra, trying to understand a little bit better the delineation between your recommendations and because some of this is sounding a lot like your recommendation now, but it's not in your budget. So like, how would you deal, having listened to this conversation? What would you do?
Well, again, that like I I sort of like I see Beth um requested fifteen thousand to be put into that reserve account. And I took it out because again, that was a sacrifice that I made um in, you know, for bottom line purposes, but.
But then you put a hundred thousand dollars into our budget for shirt tails.
Well, I mean. I I stuck all those numbers so that we could have some idea what the budget might look like and those. Yeah, that was that was more to give you an idea of what those projects were looking like they were gonna.
Bottom line, Audra, do you recommend we put in any money in this open space budget?
Yeah, I mean, it absolutely needs it and it'll be spent.
So much.
You could, I would, I would say um go with Beth's recommendation of fifteen thousand.
I mean, the other thing is that that since the skate park or the temporary skate park is a park that is an area where we could draw from if there are needs
Right.
there. Um I do want to point out, we've gotten like a couple stuff in the chat section and um like Anita Broja Scott said ten thousand dollars makes make sense for the skate park, given problems there.
Now fifty, let's put fifteen thousand in there, Jody, unless the board just, I don't hear disagreement to that. Please stop it. Please sound off if you do. We'll put fifteen thousand in there. Audra, are there any other changes beyond the ones we've just reviewed?
Those are, those are the only.
Okay.
Those are the only ones that we talked about.
Take us to the summary page, please.
And then also just um we have another question. Bob Lawson says, can the shirt tail redevelopment project be spread over several years to make the expense a little more digestible? Um I think with that kind of goes to the conversation that we just had.
Uh Jody, could you take us to the summary page where we're at right now?
Bob, do we need to vote on the fifteen thousand and nine hundred thousand for the Washington Street sidewalk?
If there's just a disagreement, um we're going to vote on the budget in total. So if there's no disagreement with this number, then we don't have to vote on it.
Audra, I think you got to take it to the summary page. Sorry about that.
Come on, Audra.
I wasn't driving.
So where we are now is a total of um net net six million seventy two thousand, which is now a almost two point six percent increase from where we were, which was six million eighty eight thousand is where we were on on the workshop. And it's uh so so actually doesn't make sense. Is that number right, Jody?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's we we were at six million eighty eight thousand uh on the on a workshop on the thirteenth. Um and that, does this include the hundred thousand we pencil held on the unassigned fund balance additional funds, Jody?
Um, this is with um for the Select Board recommendation, three hundred and fifty nine thousand for tax relief.
and then 500,000 for, um, 200 for debt service on the performance contract, and 300 loan to the wastewater. So that was 859,000 from surplus.
Do you have, uh, at this point, a summary of the, um, of those funds, the 4.1 million dollars and, and to show the board? In terms of, um, Audra, do you have that?
Sorry, I, I don't under, what, what is it that you're looking?
Unassigned fund balance, but we, the uses and, at the 4.1 million minus the 16.7%, you know, blah, 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 and see what we are in total at this point, with that and those numbers. Or Jody can tell us.
Well, I can, I can tell you, or I can email it quickly to Audra, and she can share it.
I'll, uh, I'll read it, I'll read it to you, I've got it up on the screen. So, okay, our unassigned fund balance as of, um, June 30th, 2020, was 4.1 million.
Yep.
Our policy states that we have to have 16.7 of the municipal budget on hand, which is 1.6 million.
Right.
If we're going to, for FY '21, we used 750,000.
Right.
And then we have inter-fund borrowing that we've done, which is about 467,000.
Mm-hmm.
So that leaves a net unassigned fund balance that's available out of that 4.1 million of 2.1, or almost 2.2 million. If you subtract all of those things, so the money that we have to have available by policy, 16.7%.
Yep.
The money from FY '21 that we've committed to spend.
Yep.
And inter-fund borrowing from FY '20.
That's FY '20, okay. And the net of that is 2.2?
2.2.
Wow.
And then, that doesn't include the 859 that we're looking at in this budget, correct?
It does not.
Okay, so, with the current, the current number is 859, that's what we left on the 13th?
Yes.
Okay, so if you take, um, 8.85 off of that 2.2, we're down to about, five, um, maybe one, we're about 1.1 million, 1.2 million?
1.3.
1.3 million.
Oh, okay, 1.3, sorry. All right, 1.3, okay. All right, so that's, so that's, that's the money we have, well, currently, to look forward to using next year, if we have some issues and blah, blah.
Um, let me, let me ask clarification, it's a 1.3, and we're supposed to be at 1.6, is that correct?
That's already been taken out, Mark. Uh, the 4.1, they've already taken out the top 1.6, which is, is the 16.7.
It's 1.3 above and beyond the policy.
Uh, okay, which is, which is actually, um, pretty good, maybe a little too good, um.
And I, the, the 16.7% one, which is 1.6 million, is gonna be a little more because the.
Yep.
Has increased a little bit.
Yeah, of course, it wouldn't be substantial, though.
No.
But the, I guess the question is, what does the board feel comfortable with in terms of, or does it want to consider, uh, uh, attacking this, um, where the total numbers were, uh, taking additional of this monies to, um, to further impact, um, decrease in the, in the budget, total budget from where we are right now. Mark.
Um, so our final number was, what, we were 2.0, what was it, 2.8 above?
Can we go back to the summary, please, Audra?
Go back to what? The summary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please.
So we're, the 2.55.
Yes.
Um, here's my feeling, and at the workshop, I think one of the most important things that was brought up at our financial workshop a couple of weeks ago, was Bob mentioned a conversation that he and I had had with Carrie, our, uh, who's gonna be evaluating, uh, property tax next year. Because of what COVID has done to property values, we're probably going to see an increase in taxes next year. And so next year may be a year that hurts people, and that we may be looking to try and, and help people as best we can, more so than this year. Um, and, and we still don't know the full effects of COVID, where we're going, we think we're on a good path, but we're not definitely there yet. I would like to have a little bit more money in the bank where we have. And so we're prepared for what could happen next year, when we may need to really help the citizens of the town. Um, and I'd like to be able, be, be prepared to do that. Because this year, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Just, just for, um, numbers, just so everybody knows, uh, Jody, if we took another 100,000 out of the, this account, what, what would that change the number to?
Are you meaning you lowered the coming from surplus?
Yeah.
So 759,000?
Got 100,000 to it, just, just, just to see what it does.
Uh, that went the wrong way. Taking out another 100,000?
You should have reduced it, Jody, not increased it.
I thought you said take 100,000 away from.
No, 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 yeah.
No, 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 no.
Terminology.
By the way, 759, 959.
Now, we lost, we lost the summary.
So 959,000 is now, uh, in the surplus.
But we keep losing the summary.
No, no, the other way.
Sorry.
You're down to 0.86%.
Um, and I just want, for anybody listening, I was a little confused by what Mark said. Um, and maybe Carrie was making a point that I missed, but it's just, just an increase in property values does not increase people's taxes. Um, that only happened, that actually, that just lowers the tax rate when we have an increase in values. It only increased that, the only issue is when it happens, um, you know, to certain, you know, certain properties go way up in value, and then their share of the, you know, the total, um, cost changes. But as, if we don't raise the budget, then simply increasing the value of our town does not increase people's taxes, it's the opposite.
You're correct, and the point about, the key words you said was, if we don't increase the, the magnitude of the budget, if we, if we come up with an increased budget next year for capital and projects, or whatever we come up with, and at the same time, is you, is this, uh, higher valuation of present will impact low, low to middle cost housing in Camden. It will be.
What, what Carrie said was that the changes in value have not been in the upper-end housing. It's been in the low and middle-end housing, and it's at a point where, uh, he's going to have to, the, the numbers indicate that he will have to reevaluate, um, the taxes again, because the numbers are gonna hit a certain number, and he's gonna have to reevaluate. And it could hurt low and middle-income housing, um, and the higher end won't be affected much at all.
Right, yeah, that's exactly, okay, I just wanted people to hear that, um, honestly said.
That's very important, you're right, it's a balancing act between budget and assessment, you're absolutely right. Um, so anyway, um, if, that's where the, if the 1.3 million became 1.2 million net, um, you know, it's, it's not, not a big rack, um, but it does drop, I just wanted to point out, it does drop the, um, the, uh, net effect quite a bit, um, on the bottom line, if the board wants to consider. I, in my opinion, we, we have, you know, the 16.7%, 1.6 million, we have a net-net here, Jody, at the moment, 1.3, we go down to 1.2 if we put another 100,000 in. That is also substantial amount of money, it is taxpayer money. Um, it, but, but to Mark's point, I agree, we want to make sure we have a pushing for this year, just in case we want to dramatically, if, if this reassessment occurs, and if it has dramatic impact, to hold the town's expenses increased total, uh, flat, or, or less than flat next year, that's where we would use that. You want to keep it in your back pocket.
That was the point.
Allison, do you have it, hand up, or you just contemplate?
I do, but I see Taylor has his hand up, so I was gonna wait for Taylor.
Taylor?
Um, yeah, I, I see both sides of the argument. I think, um, my question, Jody, what's the, is the balance 1.2 in surplus? About there, if we go to the 959 out of surplus in this budget?
It would, it would be down to 1.2, yes. Above and beyond what? The 16.7%?
Right, above and beyond. Um, the, my feeling is that I think that it, uh, it's, it's smart to be thinking that if lower and middle-income homes do see a higher, uh, an evaluation adjustment essentially, that will raise their, um, property tax to be prepared for that as good, but I also think that 1.2 million in surplus above and beyond our policy is a fair amount. And I think that, um, taking another 100,000 out of surplus to keep this budget a little more flat and keep the tax bills low in this year, um, is also smart. So I would personally like to see keeping it in, that, another 100,000 from surplus in there at 959 from surplus.
That would bring us to the five, almost $6 billion, 5.972 was shown here, about a point, point rough rounding off, 0.9% increase in taxes for our one-third of the tax bill. So, Allison, you have?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of that as well, and I also think it's important to remember that this 16.7% policy is not a law. It is a policy that, um, some Select Board at some point came up with, so we shouldn't treat it as though it's, you know, there's some massive wisdom in it, just all in itself. Um, the other thing that one auditor said to us at one point, and you can get five different auditors and five different points of view on how much should be left in there, but Camden does also have significant reserve funds. Um, and so sometimes these policies are for towns that don't have a bunch of different reserve funds for all the things that we know could need them. So I feel, you know, the combination of those two things, um, I feel fine about it.
I agree 100% with you. Uh, Mark, go ahead.
I'm, I'm comfortable with this change, uh, so we end up at point, basically at 0.9%.
When Allison mentioned earlier, but policies and, and talked about the policy for the Village Greenie, I said there are a couple of policies we should review, this is the other one. I think the 16.3% to me is, is, is a little too, um, off the wall. Uh, if you take 1.6 million plus 1.2, you really have in reserve, or, uh, you know, 2.8 million dollars, that, that's a lot of money for a town, or so I said. Um, and I would go more aggressive, except for the trepidation about when maybe forthcoming, but. Uh, to that end, then, do I have a motion to accept this budget as, at, at, well, net-net, 5,972,630 something, I can't read it, there's a little symbol there.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'll make the motion that we accept the budget of 5,972,630 figure, I can't read that figure either, um. 630 dollars.
Thank you, Audra. Okay, uh, motion made second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second, discussion. Roll call, Jenna?
Aye.
Uh, Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor? Uh, I see, I see your mouth, I, I know that, so, Taylor, thank you, and Bob, I also, um, that's zero, uh, thank you very much. Um, next item on our agenda, and thank you, Jody, thank you very much for all the gyrations, and you too, Audra, for keeping the balls in the air.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up, um, because this is gonna impact the warrant.
Oh, oh, yeah, of course, that's understandable, yeah. Let me write down that number, just in case, the 5 million, 5 million, well, it's gonna, it's all the lines, right?
Yep, but I'm gonna go through and change them, so.
All right, while you're doing that, that is our next item on the agenda, is the approval of the town meeting warrant. Um, I'm sure you all read through the warrant, we've already gone through the ordinance changes, uh, once before. It does add a warrant, uh, language for the inter-local agreement, and Audra's gonna be changing the, the, um, the numbers from Budget Committee versus, uh, uh, Select Board, correct? Is that what you're doing, Audra?
That's what I'm doing.
Are there any, while we're doing that, do we have any comments on the other warrant items that are, that we're proposing for the June ballot? This is our, this is the 11th hour, we have more tomorrow.
Um, sorry, I'm just noticing, um, there's somebody with his hand still raised, and I'm not sure if that, um, is just leftover from before, Larry Christman.
That was leftover from before, I saw that one, it was two, there was two, that, that was one of them, was about the skate park, uh, Rocky, he did up also.
Larry, I'm going to lower your hand, but if you meant for it to be up to speak about any of these items, then.
Yep.
Feel free to raise it again.
Thank you for orchestrating, Allison. Um, and with that, um, but to get back to my question to the board, do you have any questions, comments on the, the warrant as drafted in our packet?
Um.
What, Allison?
Our, since there, there was discussion of having a, a public hearing tonight on the tannery, um, issue, I didn't know if it would make sense for somebody to just give an, an update as to where we stand there, I know we discussed it in the workshop, but.
Well, I'd like to give a brief text, oh, she's working on that right now.
Or maybe you, Bob, I don't know.
I'd be happy to do it, yeah. I, I think, and I'm trying to do it in a nutshell, um, as we, um, allowed us, uh, through the process of public hearings, and while we, we wound up with 30 days of trying to work out a substantive purchase and sale agreement with the, uh, selected developer, um, as we go into the process, um, 30 days is frankly quite short and, and challenging to, uh, we, we wound up with some issues that took time to resolve, uh, with the, in drafting it, and at the end of the day, we ran it to a few stags that we needed to clarify completely, uh, in, in the process where we were at, we had to get those clarified, get them reviewed by attorneys from both sides, and frankly, it would have been a rushed job to get it to the, to the June ballot, and that's probably one of the last things you want to do with something as important as our tannery potential project for the voters to get, because there's just way too much potential that, um, if we didn't get these things resolved completely, that there'd be problems in the project as we proceeded, uh, uh, beyond, if, if it were approved, beyond the June timeframe, so that's when we decided to table it, it was a sacred, much safer play for both parties, and I believe the, uh, the, um, the development entity, in this case, Greensport, agree with that also. Uh, Audra, do you get that all done?
I am, yes, I am done.
Okay, um, let's see, um, let's, so, is, are there any comments, board, or we have to make a motion to accept this language as drafted? This is gonna go to print, and, um, I, I think this week. Jody?
I just have one, um, uh, under Article 8.
Article 8.
Which is, um, shall the town vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of property taxes with no interest to be paid on the same? Underneath, it says new article, we can remove that because it's no longer a new article, just, I don't want to cause any confusion with anybody.
Yeah, don't. Um, okay, I'm just trying to, which one was it, Jody?
Article number eight.
Article number eight, whoops. Who's that? Yeah, I see it. Um, shall the town, oh, no, newer, it was necessary to tell, no, it was great. Uh, we don't need to know it at all.
We don't need to know.
Did you get that, Audra?
Um, for the, sorry, the taxes.
Article 8, there's a, is a note on Article 8 that says, the new article, that is necessary, I believe we put that in.
Yep, that's gone.
Okay, any other comments to this, uh, language, anybody's caught anything? Allison, go ahead.
Um, this may not be the right time to discuss this, but I don't know when the right time is with the budget and the general categories of the budget, the names of them.
Yep.
Um, who has the authority to change those? Um, it just, some of them are not good anymore, like specifically highways, streets, and bridges. If, I'm, you know, people calling the Public Works Department, the Highway Department, has bothered me for years. Camden, we have no highways that we're responsible for, um, or like leisure services. Is that, can we change that at some point? Is that in the charter somewhere? It doesn't, leisure services, people don't know that that means the library and Parks and Rec. But I know we're not gonna change it this year, but.
No, you make a good point, Allison, we should just make sure we don't lose the action next year, otherwise it'd be the same thing all over again. And because I agree, it is kind of confusing, but now, next year, I'm not sure, I mean, I hope we're not gonna be, have to put all this in the, in the secret ballot next year, maybe we can have a town meeting again, but.
Oh.
Well, you know.
That's probably a question I could ask our auditor, too.
That'd be great.
Well, I think, uh, yeah, that'd be great, would you get back to us with that? I think it's a good point, because especially in the, here, it does get, leisure services, it sounds like you're, I don't know.
Who wants to vote for that? I mean, I feel like, no, I don't want the town of Camden investing, you know.
One point two million.
One point two million dollars in leisure services.
Do I have a motion to accept the warrant as drafted with, with the modification to Article fifteen to reflect the budget we just approved?
Uh, there's, there's a couple others that, and I want to read them out because I think it's important that.
Please. Otherwise, we're gonna make a mistake and we don't have, we don't have it tomorrow.
We do, we don't. Okay, so Article thirteen, my proposed amendment is, shall the town vote to appropriate a hundred and forty thousand of tax increment financing, financing revenues collected from the downtown Tiff district to offset the cost of Knowlton Street parking lot lease purchase and maintenance of downtown parking lot? Provide matching grant funds, matching for grants, to apply for grants for the redevelopment of Harbor Park Seawall and Montgomery Dam.
Okay, now, does it, does note have, the note is still accurate, though?
The note is not accurate anymore because the Budget Committee approved seventy thousand use of Tiff revenue when it was just for the parking lot lease purchase maintenance.
So do we leave that note in there as is?
I would take it out completely.
Would agree.
Because it's not really gonna, like, it's, it would just be too long to explain what's going on, and that really isn't the purpose of a note.
I would agree. So delete the note on Article thirteen. Plus, what other changes did you make, Audra?
Okay, so for Article fourteen, and Jody, can you please make sure I'm saying the right amount? Shall the town vote to appropriate three million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one from non-property tax revenue sources to be used in reducing the property tax commitment to the expenditures in the following article for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year?
Um, I have, um, three million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yep, and so the note has been changed to reflect that as well.
Yeah, but, but, of course, the Budget Committee's amount does not change.
No, just the Select Board.
Okay, now, better, keep going. I know what the next one, I was jumping.
Hold on, can I, I, can I ask a question about?
Sure.
I guess I'm a little bit confused about how we, things that are included within our budget versus what needs a separate warrant article? Because we just did, we talked about the use of Tiff funds in the budget, but since that.
It still needs a separate warrant article to be approved by voters.
Okay, is it okay to use the same warrant article for two? For different things, you know, Knowlton Street Parking Lot and Harbor Park Seawall, is that?
Yep, so in the past, we've done like Knowlton Street Parking Lot and last year was Harbor Walkway. The same warrant article and said, this is the total amount of Tiff funds we're using and these are the things that we're gonna be spending them on.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, on to fifteen, then, Audra.
Okay, so, shall the town vote to appropriate nine million eight hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-one? With some, but not all of that to be raised by taxation as follows. And then Select Board recommends, general government, two million one hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-nine. Public safety, two million six hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred forty-two. Highway, streets and bridges, one million seven hundred thirteen thousand, thirty-eight. Health and welfare, ten thousand five hundred. Leisure services, one million seven hundred thirteen thousand, thirty-eight. Cemeteries, sixty thousand three hundred. Debt capital contingency, two million fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two.
Total?
Nine million eight hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-one.
What was the amount you put in the first sentence?
Oh, nine hundred, oh, sorry, nine million eight hundred forty-one thousand, seven fifty-one.
I just want to make sure they're right. Okay.
Audra, what was the, what was the line in E again? What was the difference in E leisure services?
It was one million seven hundred thirteen thousand, thirty-eight.
Wow, that's a huge, huge build. Okay. It, I, I'm not comfortable with the same leisure services. That sounds
I agree with that.
Doesn't sound as appropriate to what the changes are. That sounds like.
How does the note change?
We're getting pillows for the Select Board chairs or something.
Right. What is the note changes, uh, numbers? There has to be changes there too, right, Audra?
Yeah, so the difference between what the Budget Committee recommended in expenditures and what the Select Board recommended in expenditures is seventy-nine thousand, fourteen dollars.
Okay. And the increase in expenditure of what?
Three percent, three point oh one percent from the prior fiscal year.
Because you didn't, because you're not taking into account revenue.
Correct. That notes just about expenditures.
Got it.
Um. I have a.
Go ahead, Allison.
I, I'm sorry to do this. It's about the Tiff funds again and that question. Are, are we, is the Riverwalk an allowable expense with downtown Tiff money?
Yes.
Um, I'm just a little concerned that by allowing it for only referencing the Harbor Park Seawall and Montgomery Dam, using it as matching funds for that, that we might be missing an opportunity, the next section of the Riverwalk with the wastewater treatment plant and all of that, combined with anything that would happen with the Knowlton Street Dam would all be. I mean, that would be Riverwalk related, and it might be the, the more likely grant that we would apply for first, the NIFWIF.
What are you recommending?
I'm not sure if it's reasonable to add in anything additional into that language, or if it's too flying by the seat of our pants, but mentioning the Riverwalk, you know, giving us the ability to use the, use that as matching funds for a Riverwalk grant, or which would, you know, possibly also be related to a river restoration grant, might make sense. The next, there's, there's a growing awareness that the next section of the Riverwalk might be one of the most expensive parts.
How's this for an amendment to Article thirteen?
Sure.
Shall the town vote to appropriate a hundred forty thousand of tax increment fines, financing revenues collected from the downtown Tiff district to offset the cost of Knowlton Street Parking Lot lease purchase and maintenance and the maintenance of downtown parking lots and provide matching funds to apply for grants for the redevelopment of the Harbor Park Seawall and Montgomery Dam, as well as the Riverwalk development.
Okay. And the other changes to the warrant recommended, Audra, anybody? Can I get a motion to accept the warrant language as, as redrafted and our Audra has explained?
So moved.
Second.
Well, motion made in second discussion. Not hearing any. Roll call, vote, Taylor?
Hi.
I'm prepared to say hi. I can read you. Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Okay, Allison?
Aye.
Well, I five zero, thank you very, very much. Let me just get back up to my agenda and take a look at what we've got, what we've got left. And most of, hold on a second, one second. Here we go. Um, let's see, we've got one, one action, easy. Why don't we, you know, we, I think we have, we bounced this one around, and let's move the discussion item, the skate park up on the agenda because people, I know, want to speak to it, and I think it's a good idea to do it now before they have to put their pajamas on and go to bed. And so with that, Audra, did you want to start the discussion while people are contemplating wanting to speak to this item?
Um, I mean, I, I think it's probably best if you just let everyone speak first because I think that's going to
Okay, okay.
Inform the conversation that we have about this issue.
Okay, good. That's fine.
Okay. I'm gonna start bringing people in in the order that their hands are raised.
We're gonna do it, Allison.
Well, now, there's, there are other ways, but reverse alphabetical, all kinds of things, but so far.
I like alphabetical according to height.
Going to head out if, if I'm.
Yes, thank you very much.
You'd like me to stay? I'm happy to stay.
Please introduce yourself and please leave me your comments less than three minutes.
Am I up?
Yeah, did you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So this is Marty Baez. Hi, everyone. Um, we had talked about, I think Raffi reached out to Allison about doing a GoFundMe page.
Yep.
Um, and we're really want to do something like that to help fund the skate park. But then we also feel like if we do invest the time and the energy to raise funds, then we also need to feel like there's a commitment from the town to like work things out. I mean, I think we have to coexist with gyms, obviously, and the people in the, the area so that everyone feels like this is okay, instead of there being so much, you know, frustration. I mean, obviously, she's extremely frustrated. You know, our kids are basically aged out. But we understand that with the teen center closed, there's not a lot of places for kids to go, especially after school. So there's a lot of middle school kids who are now going to the skate park that never went before. And I think that's a good thing. I think that allowing our kids to, you know, be outside during COVID is a great thing. And yes, maybe we need to not spend ten thousand dollars on a, on a camera. Um, but we need to maybe, you know, have shifts with parents, and we come and clean up the park. And we help, you know, make the kids abide by the rules. I drive by there all the time. I could just assume stop, go in, talk to the kids, make sure everybody's following what they said that they would, when we agreed to doing this. So.
And, and there's a range of ages with the kids. I mean, usually when I go there, there are very young kids. I mean, it, for me, it's been a huge success. I mean, I applaud the Select Board for accepting this equipment that was actually in the adjacent lot. And accepting it and then giving it a, a place for this kids to come, and it's just very popular. I mean, during this time of the pandemic, it's allowed kids a space to come together and, and recreate. And for the most part, I mean, yes, you're gonna have kids that are not gonna follow the rules, but that, you know, that's gonna happen in a town.
Um, and another thing is, I think that we should create like a friends of the skate park group. And then maybe that, the group of parents that are willing to be a part of that can field some of these problems so that, that, you know, you guys don't have to deal with them all the time. Make it.
Thank you guys very much. I want to, we have a number of people who want to speak, but thank you, guys. Appreciate your input. And we'll move on to, Bob, I think you were next.
Hey, Bob, thanks. I, I guess just a real quick question, a little bit going back to the budget for the staffing for the skate park. Do, do we know at this point, Audra, what will the role be? I mean, what, I guess as neighbors to the park, will the role have some teeth in terms of being able to say, these are the rules? What happens if kids don't follow the rules? Um, I heard an example recently where somebody said, you know, you have a community pool, and in a community pool, you always have a lifeguard, and everybody listens to the lifeguard. And I guess maybe I would equate this to being something similar to that. But do we have a, a sense at this point in time as to what this role will do or be?
Well, I mean, we've, if you have somebody with teeth, we have a police department, and that's their function. So I don't see this, the purpose of this position or any time dedicated by Parks and Rec staff, whether it's one position or a few people who go there and check in as being anything other than, you know, somebody there to make sure that people are following the rules and cleaning up after themselves, and if there's any issues with equipment, you have somebody there who can sort of identify a problem before it becomes a, a major issue and build some rapport with the, the users. I think that it would be preferable because from the start, there was quite a bit of commitment from the community and particularly parents of skate park users to taking an active role in the operation of the park. So I think that that would be far preferable to having it be a town employee per se. Um, but I, I do think that that's something that it's gonna require a group of people who are really organized. Um, and, you know, we certainly would welcome that, and we've put out a call for people to volunteer for that role on Facebook and our website. Unfortunately, I haven't, we haven't received very many people who have signed up so far. There are a few people who have committed to doing, you know, they said that they'll do it, but you know, we, we just sort of, we need more volunteers and we need volunteers who can organize themselves as well.
Sure, and I guess if I could, the four thousand dollar for the skate park maintenance, can you, can you itemize that a little bit? What would that entail?
I can't itemize it. It would be, there's stuff that breaks there all the time. There was quite a bit of money that was spent just on, you know, replacing things like plywood and so I, I can't tell you specifically what it is, but that equipment is, you know, it's at the end of its usable life, and so we're constantly needing to make repairs to it. And to date, it's been, I think, one volunteer who's put a lot of the funds into making repairs.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Also, let's get some other people in, Chris, Mr. Christman or Ms. Christman? Thanks, Bob.
I would just clarify that we haven't put anything out on Facebook. There's been something on the website. I've been approached by a lot of people who are upset that it's closing early, and they're saying, why doesn't it, why does it close later? And I've said, well, we can't even have that discussion because we're having a lot of other issues that were, are just unmanageable at this point.
I would say that we've probably all gotten just as many complaints from people who are upset that it closes at five as from, you know, kind of the people who are upset with noise.
Let's move on to Mr. Christman, if he's there.
I am here.
Please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, uh, and let me clarify one thing on, on the budget front.
First, will you please introduce yourself first, please?
Okay, I'm Larry Christman, fourteen Alden Street.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and Audra talked about not being able to meet all the concerns of the groundskeeping and so on. And, and I want to just concur with that. Uh, as we've seen rose bushes growing through the, the fences along Knowlton that has actually blocked the sidewalks. So I know they've not been able to keep up with things as it is. Uh, on the skate park, I, I, I think that my concern is, is how this is best orchestrated because I know there have been threats by some of the older teenagers, and I'm not sure if it's not even twenty-year-olds, against some of the property owners, not me personally. Okay, uh, that, that there may be problems with their homes, et cetera. Okay, if they continue to call the police to close it down in the evening. Uh, and, and that process, I mean, I understand that some people think it's five o'clock early, but I think we need some rights of peaceful coexistence and so on, especially for those that are working after they get home in the evening to be able to spend a little time outside. We have, I've been up there in January. I've been up there again in February, March. And the, the amount of noise that comes from there is quite heavy, okay? Uh, let alone any intimidation and bullying they may be doing, okay, of their residents. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I know it's not an unleashed process of just posting a sign, which has been knocked down numerous times, of what the rules are as far as timing, et cetera. But I think we've got to do something different.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you very much. I think the last person we have is.
Yep, thanks again for, I know I've taken up quite a bit of time already, but.
Yep. Uh, thanks again for, I know I've taken up quite a bit of time already, but um, Taylor, I appreciate your your input. Um, I will say that um this started as a grassroots project that was kind of uh allowed to run, uh, that was allowed to run. And um, you know, it it continued to evolve as a grassroots, you know, volunteer project. And it has failed. Uh, we've not seen parents out there. We see the rules on Facebook that say drop your kids off in the parking lot. They don't. They pick them up well after the posted hours of five o'clock. We see that the kids are are, they don't care about the guidelines of, you know, picking up after themselves. They don't care about being respectful to the neighbors, all things that were listed out on that, um, you know, those rules that were posted on the Facebook page. So I I I guess I'm at a at a loss. I I feel like, I feel like I've been targeted. I feel like, you know, as Taylor said, we we want to make sure Janice is okay. It's not about me being okay. This is about a process that wasn't followed to begin with. And it has just gone completely off the rails. And uh, I don't want to walk out my, out of my house and feel like I'm I'm threatened. When I've gone over to talk to those kids, the first couple of times was because there were some sketchy people over there talking to them. You know, a man that looked, uh, you know, unsteady on his feet, disheveled, talking to them at length in a sh- in a shouting manner. And I walked over and and kind of just inserted myself. And I told those kids, listen, if you ever feel threatened, come to my house. Well, now they've decided that I'm the enemy because the rules say five o'clock. And we're all living outside these days. And I, we deserve as much of that outdoor space and and that peace and quiet as they do. And I don't want to go down that path again, but, you know, the the idea that uh parents are going to be out there volunteering their time to manage this, the whole point was that they were able to allow their kids to be somewhere else. And uh, you know, skate it out and and, you know, use up some of that energy before coming home. But there are limits. And none, none of those things have been followed, you know? I don't know what more to say about it. I I just think that that we're not going down the right path here. I would love for some process to be involved, uh, to to take place. I'd love to see this happen in a way that it would work for all of us. I'd be the biggest supporter of a park that if it were done correctly, but it hasn't been.
Okay. Thank you, Janice. Um, again, I'm sorry for the frustration.
I know. And I appreciate you listening to me, all of you.
There's a work, this is obviously a working process. Um, I think that's it in terms of the um.
Um, I think we've got, I, Katie.
All right, let's take some of these others off.
Um, yep, I'll.
Please. Uh, yep. Katie, who?
Um, I bet I'm guess, I could make a guess, but maybe we'll just let her.
Bet you knew who it was, Allison.
It just says Katie. I've promoted her to a panelist. She raised her hand.
All right. All right. I got it.
I will ask to unmute.
They did already. Um, Katie, are you there? There she is.
Unmute, unmute.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Katie Urie. I live at 39 Goodwin Lane. Um, and I have, you know, because of other duties, been in and out of this the select board meeting tonight and watching what I can. And I feel like I just want to go on record as a very concerned parent about the skate park. And I heard what Janice had to say. Um, which honestly, I mean, I can give you the ages of my kids at 10, 13, and 16. And it's shocking to hear. Um, it's really hard to believe that that is happening in our community. I can't, that's, it's surprising. It's not my kid's experience at the skate park. Um, it's not my experience being around the skate park. Um, and to say that the skate park is a failed experiment seems a little harsh. I think that there are kids who are there, who are working together collaboratively, who are having a fabulous experience um and who are using the skate park well. So I don't think that it has failed. I think that there are people in the community, it's summertime in Maine or getting to be summertime in Maine, and five o'clock seems early to a lot of people. Um, and I get it. There are people who are on Alden Street who are not used to this change in their environment. To say it's a failed experiment and hear only from the people on Alden Street who don't like the noise doesn't seem like a fair process. And so I just wanted to be on record to say that I have seen the skate park as a really positive addition to our community. Um, I would echo the bit that I heard about, you know, parents who are willing to be involved. Um, I I have been one of those involved parents. I know I've been in contact with other parents who are also involved. We have teenage boys who have been down there really doing trash patrol and trying to help keep our community clean, keep the skate park a place that does. And these are kids who, I mean, honestly, for my my eight-year-old, or not eight-year-old, my 10-year-old, my 13-year-old, my 16-year-old are now down there with wine bottles. I don't know where that's coming from. Um, and they had, I asked them about that when I heard about this on the meeting. I said, is that something that you're seeing? And across the board, it's a no. Um, so is there anything, I have actually my 16-year-old here. Would you like to say anything? Or do you want to hear from a 16-year-old? I don't know.
Well, we have to go on to, I think it's one of the first that's a hand up. So I appreciate the input. We just like was gonna have to deal with this issue.
Yeah.
In form. So don't we have one more, Allison, on?
Well, lots of, lots of hands went up. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie. Thanks a lot.
There's K and J, which if you just want to do the new.
Yes.
Okay, so K and J, I'm not sure.
And she said, because other people are raising their hands to speak again, we have to bring this to a head somehow and and discussing this like we're in a motion for it. I'm not sure what it's gonna be, but.
It's a discussion item.
This is you.
Yeah, what?
It's a discussion item only. There's no.
I understood, Janice, understood. Um, um, okay, K and J, please introduce yourselves.
That was Audra saying that, by the way, but.
Hi, hi, everybody. It's it's uh Kim and Jack Nicolet. This is Charlie in the middle. Um, he's our 13-year-old who uses the skateboard, uh, skate park regularly. So um, sorry about my finger on the camera there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We just wanted to to kind of reiterate what Katie had said, that there are plenty of kids, especially Charlie and his friends that use the skate park quite often and haven't had any bad experiences as far as people coming up and um kind of inserting themselves into um the group. Now, as far as like the trash pickup and things um of that nature, as far as the upkeep, um, we have all, as parents, talked about the fact that we would love to be part of that and we would be happy to help organize that. Um, I have not unfortunately seen anything posted on the city or the town's website um yet, but that doesn't mean that, you know, it hasn't been there and I just missed it. Um, I think Charlie wanted to also mention a couple of things about the benefits of the skate park, just so that we have that perspective as well.
Well, yeah, so I enjoy, we, I know a lot of people enjoy using the skate park and and uh enjoy using it and riding there and doing what they love instead. And the timeframe being five o'clock, I agree, and I know a lot of my friends agree that is is quite early during the summertime because I know that when it gets, it's has, there's more hours of daylight after five o'clock that could be used to ride. But I also understand that people are outside trying to live on Alden Street that do not uh enjoy like the the noise that the skate park makes, but I do. But I, but I think that the time should be longer because people do like do other sports or some people, like older guys have their jobs during the day and they want to come and like skateboard for look like an hour or two. But it it's, it won't, they can't because it's closed at such a early time during summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Allison, do we have anybody else that wants to speak?
Uh, hands are down now. Um, yeah, no new.
Okay.
People.
Obviously, there's a beast that's going on here. I'm just like, you don't already know that. Um, um, the, any comments to select for before I, you know, talk to Audra about this, Allison?
Um, I I just want to say that, I mean, some of the resources that the town needs is just the the organizing part of it. And it's just finding, you know, volunteers are great. And I've had many offers for volunteers, but we haven't, because we haven't had this discussion and we haven't, um, you know, developed what the framework is is gonna be, there hasn't been um, a place to direct those volunteers. Um, and the season got sort of started fast. And I do think that there is a huge group of parents out there that is very accustomed to taking turns supervising and supporting the things that their kids care about. We see it all the time. It has not been communicated widely that there is a way to help and that there's a problem and that there's a danger. And so as a town, we do have to, we do have to devote some resources to it. And it's probably gonna be at this point organizing, I would think. Um, on behalf of the Parks and Rec staff are gonna have to do some of their organizing to be able to be the point people so that people can volunteer and get involved. But what we've seen over and over again in this community is that people do rise to the occasion. There is, there's, I mean, there's a huge group of people willing to help. Um, the idea that we can just leave this all completely unattended doesn't make sense. Um, losing the teen center is a huge thing. I mean, I'm I'm frankly feeling a little bit of anger and frustration at the at the why because this was something that was loved by everyone. All of the sudden, it just went away and it's been thrown on the town. But this is not our area of expertise. Um, and so we're gonna need a lot of help from the community if we want it to continue. The community clearly does want this to continue. Um, but it's, the problem isn't going away because the the teen center not, I mean, we need to be having like, I think, a larger community discussion about after-school options for these kids. Um, I mean, that's, I just think it's a a big loss.
I agree with you. Audra, do you have any input on that? We know this is an issue.
Yeah, um, so uh we have put up, um, you know, a call for volunteers on the website. We have shared that on the Facebook page. Um, we've got a couple of people who are um helping organize. So Zach Winkelhofer and his numbers on the Facebook page, uh, sorry, the website and the Facebook page. And Holly Anderson um is also going to help organize. So those are sort of the two point people to contact. And I think um between Zach and Holly, they're they're gonna try to come up with a schedule of um volunteer monitors and we'll see if that works. And also trying to organize other people to do more of the trash pickup and um any sort of, you know, repair work. And I know that there was a group who was around earlier on that was talking about fundraising, which would be hugely helpful. Um, because I think there are some of these problems that, um, you know, even though resources were dedicated to them by the town, of course, they can be done um more effectively if if there's some community fundraising that's done as well.
Is there any, is there any schedule of this activity? Because this is going on for weeks now. And the frustration level is obviously growing on both sides. The wonderful asset for children, no question about it. But there's frustrations going on too. Uh, do we, do we, is this community, what's, how long is it gonna take to form the community action group? How long is it gonna take to figure out what they're gonna fund? How they're gonna fund it? I mean, we can keep.
I don't, I don't know what this, I mean, quite honestly, I don't have the time to be the one.
I get it. I get, that's my question because the they were, without leadership, all these activities wind up as a, you know, we'll be talking about this in 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 June about the problems of skateboard parking. And um, and we've got, we've got to bring this thing to a head somehow.
Right. And I, I think that, you know, we had been hoping that somebody was gonna sort of grab the torch and organize everyone and do this. But, I mean, like Allison said, you know, we're, it needs, it needs help kind of getting up and off the ground. So, you know, we'll, we'll provide that support and hope that the community, like Allison says, does rise to the occasion and help out.
I'd like to see a report on that regard in the next meeting because if we don't hear hands raising and people standing up, then I, yeah, I'm from Missouri. I want to be able to see it. Yeah, I think they will. I I think that that can happen. Allison, go ahead.
The idea that this has been widely communicated is just, it's just false. We we may have shared one thing on our, you can put things on the town website and people don't um see them. So it needs to be broadly communicated that there is an issue and people will rise to the occasion. It also needed to be a select board discussion to, it's, it is taking some town resources. Just, you know, Holly's a, you know, an awesome organizer. They they do a lot of this really well. Hopefully, they can just help to pass it off onto a friend's group. But it does take um a contact person and it did take this, it it coming to us, it being presented as a problem and us authorizing the use of some resources um so as to not, and for next year too, for the budget. So I I think this isn't a case of everybody just ignoring it. This is people being, you know, just needing to be told what to do. I do think, I mean, I'm already getting messages from parents as we speak. Um, so.
Let's get there to a focal point so we can talk about next time we meet because we can't keep pushing. No, I, unfortunately, I'm John just because I heard positive statements in the past that seemed to, from my perspective, by the way, it's distant perspective, that just seemed to have died. And and that we can't, we got to keep pressure on it. Otherwise, it's gonna be, we're gonna run into a stone wall here. Mark?
I'm very distressed to hear um about what's happened to the neighbors of the park. You know, as in every situation, the great majority of kids can be respectful and clean up and stuff like that. It just takes a few to to ruin it for everybody.
Yep.
And in those decisions, it's hard to make a decision about what to do. But because I was, I was very involved in when the YMCA announced that they were gonna um not be able to work with equipment anymore, making sure that the town stayed with it and worked on this. But unless we find a way to solve this, we can't put that on on those neighbors. It's not fair to them. You know, the kids and the families have to take responsibility to run it well or we we can't do that. It's 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 not fair. Um, and I wish I had a good answer today. I'd like to hear more discussion. I'd like to see people step up. I'd like to see what kind of solutions people can come up with. But any kind of, any kind of word about the kids are um threatening the neighbors is out of bounds, totally out of bounds.
I agree. We 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 talked about it. We've heard public input. Um, Audra, we, you know, we just want to see between now and the next select for me, who is stepping up to Allison's point? I'm glad to hear. There's all these types of people want to step up and find out we, a a, you know, a number or list of of those that's trying to step up, not just kind of good language, good words. We need the action. Otherwise, this thing is heading for a stone wall.
It's, I mean, this is a a success in a lot of ways. I think it's really unfair. There have been issues, but there's, did you not hear at all from the parents who are saying that if you, if you go there, people go there all the time and it's lots of good things are happening. Um, there is a lot of inappropriate pushback to the time of closure. And that is a result, I think, of the town not taking ownership enough of those rules. And so it's kind of pushed it on the neighbors and it's created this really unfortunate thing. But a lot of what we need to do is just be communicating those rules effectively ourselves and getting the parents to enforce them and figuring out, I mean, it's.
And I would, I would like to say that um our police department has been going around to close the park and speak with some of the users and talk with them about, you know, what it would take to even consider opening later or uh remaining open later. The children in the 13 to 15-year age group have been absolutely phenomenal, very responsible. They've gone and picked up um and, you know, done everything they've been asked. So I would say that, you know, for a lot of the, particularly the younger users of the park, they've taken a lot of responsibility and they've been doing everything that they've been asked to do and they've been very respectful.
All right, we will, we need to move on with our agenda. Obviously, it's gonna be a continuing item to discuss. And we certainly want to hear more about this next, next time from whomever, Audra, whomever, or Allison, although the parents, I'd like to see some action um in terms of parents and continuing to increase to help us with making this even better than it is. I, it's not a disaster. It just needs to be better than it is. With that, we're going to move on to the action to approve the contract with Midcoast Conservancy. Audrey, do you want to lead that one?
Uh, yes. So as all of you remember, last year we entered into an agreement with Midcoast Conservancy to help us manage two grants that we received for, you know, one was from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the restoration of McGonagook River. So it was a feasibility study looking at the entire river system and the dams along the river and our options for how they can be managed into the future to make the community more resilient through the impacts of climate change and particularly, you know, increased and more intense rain events. As well as Coastal Communities Grant that we received to look at design for Harbor Park and Montgomery Dam, which would include fuller partial dam removal and then redoing the seawall so that it's also more resilient to the impacts of climate change. As we all know, it's frequently overtopped four to eight times a month. So Midcoast Conservancy, they have a history of working on river restoration projects. They've done a lot of work on the Sheep Skit River. And they have staff that have specific expertise in their, this area. So we brought them on board to help us with things like stakeholder engagement, taking a very broad view of who stakeholders are, because a big part of this work is forming partnerships with people who are, you know, in, involved in the industry in, in some manner, as well as community members. And then also helping with, you know, a lot of the project management side of the grant projects as well. And I think it's been, it's been a really important relationship. I think that projects like this are very long term in their scale. You know, we're looking at not just one project, but sort of a series of projects up the entire river. It's a long-term endeavor. And I think if it's going to be sustainable, it's something that needs to exist outside of just the town of Camden. And that's why we wanted to partner with an organization like Midcoast Conservancy. So this is really a continuation of that partnership. I think after having one year behind us, everybody's a lot more clear as to what our respective roles are and, and the value that they're going to bring to this project. I think that they're going to play, now that we're going to be wrapping up those two grants, they're going to be playing a increasingly large role in applying for new grants to, to try and move some of the, some of this effort forward, as well as, you know, helping with the finalization of, of the current projects.
Questions? Allison?
Another thing that I would add that's been a helpful development is the coordination with the watershed school and some of the opportunities there. One of the things that we heard a lot is that there was a feeling that we needed more staff, like a sustainability coordinator or people that can be really focused among town staff on furthering the town's climate resilience goals. And that's always been a little bit of a, kind of a hard thing to wrap our mind around what, you know, additional town staff person could be helpful there. The great thing about having an organization, you know, an environmental organization that actually, you know, that's their, their whole mission is to be at the cutting edge of this type of work. And so to have them really familiar with what's going on in Camden has made it so when we have, for instance, you know, watershed student right now who's focusing his, you know, final senior project on Harbor Park and making that more resilient. We, rather than just trying to answer questions as a town with minimal level of expertise, we can direct these people to Midcoast Conservancy. Hallie, for instance, is going to be an intern with Midcoast Conservancy. And they can kind of absorb the, the scientific interest and activity from the community in a, I think, a higher quality way than we can sometimes. So.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this contract?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? A roll call, Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I five zero. Thank you. Couple of updates. Audrey, I think you, I think you'll be leading the first one, especially the 2019 Coastal Communities Grant update.
Yes. So that project, we currently have a grant extension, an extension for that grant because a lot of the, particularly public engagement side of that project was really held up by COVID and restrictions around that. So we're going to be, you know, extending that grant deadline into December. So over the upcoming weeks, we're hoping to do a listening session to talk about, you know, that project a little bit more and get some input. So that's pretty much where we're up to with that project.
Green energy?
So with green energy, energy efficiency, I've been asked to speak at the May sixth talk that the Energy Committee is organized at the library on, you know, the, the different sort of energy efficiency and green energy measures that the town has been involved in. So it'll be a good opportunity to talk about things like the Siemens project and everything that's being done with that work and, and the people behind it. And as well as, you know, our research into options for solar development. And I do think that we're getting really close to the point where Knox County, they're going to have actual proposal with the finances that we can sort of bring forward to the select board for approval. And I do think that that's going to be the best option for the town of Camden. And we would be the single biggest user that would sort of underpin that project with Knox County, which I think is great. You know, it's a county effort and they're hoping that municipalities will buy into it.
How do you say that this is the best option when we don't have any financial on it?
Well, I mean, given that the fact it's grant funded and they have their, they're, they want to come in lower than all the other, you know, agreements, power purchase agreements that we've seen before.
Are they, what, we don't even know what their model is. Is it, is it net energy billing credit kind of?
Yes.
Perfect. That's all I need to hear.
Yes, that is the model.
Thank you, Audrey. Onto, I was in questions board. I'll go on to the special names that we have left, which are, well, do you want to mention the downtown infrastructure project? We know that's going on like crazy right now.
Yes. So I'm going to bring in, now, I, before I bring this person in, I want to make it very clear that he's not managing any of these projects. He's not responsible for them.
Well, then don't let him in.
Helping to answer questions and keep an eye on what's going on. So I'm going to bring Dave in, but I want to make it very, very clear. None of these projects are his projects.
Better be good.
He's just helping me keep, keep back great about what we've been told by DOT.
I'm just glad to hear he's still awake at nine thirty at night.
Yep, he's still up.
Well, we haven't seen that yet.
Yeah. So I guess the first project that I'd like to give you an update on is the water company project that was supposed to happen on Elm Street. To date, we've been told that it's not going to go forward this summer.
Right, read that. That's good news. I can twist to, to an extent, we have to do it later. Go ahead, Dave. Give us a little update on the traffic.
So the water company, water main replacement from school or Union Street over to Free Street is not going to happen. The DOT didn't want to try and allow or approve the traffic control plan with everything else going on. So Main Water has decided to hold off on that and postpone it. But I have gotten a call from Main Water about wanting to do some work on just the Free Street portion now. So I'm waiting to hear on that. When I have an update on that, I will be able to give you guys more up, more of an update on how that, because that's all kind of tied into what's going on. Because people kind of cut through Free Street mechanic and, you know, it all can have an impact on the traffic control plan. So we really got to pay attention to kind of slowing down traffic through the town right now. We don't want to probably bottleneck any more areas.
Okay. Are the projects on schedule, Dave?
Projects are, the stormwater project is from, for DOT in the sidewalk replacement is still on schedule, but they deviated from their schedule. So they were having troubles getting some of the material to pass testing and had to go to an alternate, alternate, alternate source, which the roads are posted to get there. So they shifted gears from putting pipe in down by Camden National Bank to moving over to the Montessori School on School or Union Street and started taking apart the sidewalk in that location. So they kind of shifted gears real quick. And so they plan on tearing up the old sidewalk, putting in the gravel and prepping for curbing, and then start back up on laying pipe next week when they have access to the proper material that passes the test.
What kind of test is this?
Well, they have, you know, fines testing and, and if it doesn't pass the, the specifications that DOT sets for the different types of material for bedding the pipe, like the sand and for the drainage material, they don't allow them to use it. And it's just a, a quality control measure put in place that, you know, you don't end up with fines and, you know, your product, which fouls the drainage and makes it non-functional at a later date.
So they had sand that turned out to not be good enough. Sure.
Well, the different types of material didn't meet the specs.
Hey, Dave?
Sure.
What do you think downtown will be all put back together again?
Ju, mid-June?
Okay, okay. Because I think it, you know, obviously we hear some, from some of the business owners and, and I know that we asked DOT to work around the schedule so that our prime season, say July through October, was not affected by, because that's most important. So as long as we can stick to that, I think we're in good shape.
They're all pretty aware of that and that's the goal is to get out of there before the July timeframe. I think mid-June is what they're shooting for. And I think the project that's going to take up the most time is going to be the stormwater and the sidewalk project. I think this, well, I don't want to shift into the other project right now unless you want me to, but I can kind of give a little bit of an update on the, on the sewer project, which is ours with Crocker, if you'd like. So that, that appears to be going pretty well. Crocker is now pretty much off of High Street or Main Street and they're turning on to Atlantic Ave. They pulled the new pipeline or new sewer main under the bridge through kind of a box that was created that spans the bridge. It was pretty, pretty cool seeing them do that. They did a great job. It came out really easy and they put it in really easy and it seems to all be going well. We, we're working on getting some quotes to work on Commercial Street and kind of get that buttoned up so that we have new pavement, you know, going down Commercial Street. And then there's another section of Sewer Main that'll be going through the public landing from kind of just as you go down over the hill, Commercial Street, cutting across to the right of the bathrooms, going kind of right to the left of the fire hydrant under the sign that says Public Landing. And that'll happen later, later in the season. And then we'll be paving that up. And then there's also another small project that goes from where, from basically where the public landing sign is, all the way to the, to the water. And that's for the sewer pump out that Steve Pixley's putting in. So that's kind of happening too. And then we've got the walkway going down by Sea Dog that we'll try to button up as well. So that's, and we'll meet next week to talk about the, the porous concrete that we want to put in that location. And we have the light poles to install those also. So everything's kind of coming together.
Yeah.
Lot of moving parts, lot of different people. But they're all doing a good job and, you know, they're doing the best they can in the conditions that they have. And we did have an accident. Someone crashed into a light pole right there on the corner of Atlantic Ave. And so that's another like little snafu that we got to take care of, order a new light pole and new fixture and put that in place. And so that's, that's what's going on with that project, or those projects. I can talk a little bit about the Siemens stuff if you like.
I care. Give, give us, give us the elevator speech.
Okay. So we're, we're, we started working on the geothermal. The, the lighting upgrades have been completed at the Snowball and at Public Works. And we started at Public Safety. And it's amazing what the lighting upgrades have done here at Public Works. I mean, we had one of the smaller lighting upgrades and, I mean, it's like night and day. It's, it's amazing. And, you know, the, the great thing is we're going to be saving energy doing it. So that's all worked out pretty well. The contractors seem to be doing a good job with the lighting.
Library?
Library, yeah, library is coming right up. We had to wait a little bit on the HVAC and, or the boiler over there because they needed the heating a little later in the season. So that's where we're at with that. So that's on target too. So everything seems to be going well. We really haven't had any problems. We've, we've been on top of things. We had a few little setbacks, but we're, we're adjusting to those. And we're going to work our way through it. Excuse me?
Thank you very much and good to see your shining face.
Thank you. Guys, have a great night and great seeing everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Audrey, do you have anything else in management report you wanted to hit us with?
Oh, I feel like I've talked enough and you've heard from me enough.
Okay. Select board reports, Allison, if you need one. Just keep smiling. Mr. Ratner?
I have nothing either.
Wait a minute, Mark. That's not like you.
No.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll get you when you get home. Safe trip. Taylor? Uh, no, thank you, Bob. Yeah?
Well, the Opera House. No, I can't do that.
Jenna and Allison, you should at least remind people about the roadside.
Right.
Oh my gosh, the roadside cleanup, no.
Yes, a press release has gone out. The roadside cleanup is this Friday, the twenty-third and Saturday, the twenty-fourth. It's the third annual. It would be the fourth if not for COVID. But Leonard Lookner Memorial Roadside Cleanup. You can contact Allison or myself to get a road assignment. We will be meeting at nine o'clock in the morning at Hanaford, both of those days to gather, distribute road assignments, safety equipment, et cetera. And yeah, check out the Facebook event. There's information on the website. Allison's pulling up the spreadsheets and things. And it's actually really fun and hopefully it will be a beautiful couple of days. And we can really tackle some of the trash that's accumulated.
Mm-hmm. Great. Like just a good, good thing you have me to remind you of this stuff.
Yeah, no, seriously. We actually, that was really a big oversight. Of course, he let us both go through, like, wait until we finally said, no, definitely not. And then he was like, oh, gotcha. But, um.
Mark a little bit.
So I'm.
Finally, we look forgetful.
But I'm going to reclaim some of my time here, just to scroll through the spreadsheet. There's a, there's a Facebook event with the link to this spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is also linked on the, on the website. So if there is a road that you haven't, that, you know, you want to do, that's not on here, you can put it on here. There are also a number of parking lots. Gate Park is on there, but the Snowball, if just generally going around town, you see places that are really bad. We've allowed this to be editable by everybody. Ideally, you can come at, we'll be there at eight thirty. Hanaford to get all of your materials. But we're actually, it's great. We're making a lot of progress. A lot of people have signed up, but we could still use a lot more because since we missed last year, especially, there's going to, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of stuff. So please, please, please share the Facebook event, link to the town website, like share the.
So please, 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 share the Facebook event, link to the town website, like, share this with as many people as possible. Because we don't want to have to do it again.
Good. Glad we caught that one. Cool. Anything else, anybody? Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to adjourn by Mr. Ratner.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's select board meeting with thanks to all for participating and uh, see you again in a couple of weeks.
Second.
Roll call vote, Allison?
Hi.
Hi.
Marco?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, good. Five zero, Bob also. Thank you so much. Thank you, Audrey, for all your comments. Um, hope you haven't lost your voice and we'll, I'll talk to you all soon. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Bob, for staying calm and peaceful and keeping us on the rails and.
You have to thank Taylor for doing his point of order. I think that was a good move. But anyway.
Yeah.
It was, definitely was. Um, yeah, thank you all. Mark, safe travels, huh? When you're coming back.
Thank you very much. I'll be back on Friday.
Okay, coffee time.
All right, we're going to go on. Here we go.
Okay. Audrey looks tired.
Well, I'm, I don't think she looks tired, but I am, I am tired.
I am tired too. I don't know how you do it, Audrey, I really don't. I, I wouldn't, I don't care how much they pay you.